Okay, I am gonna call us to order at 6 o'clock. So, we're gonna open the meeting up for public comment at 6:00 PM. Feel free to raise your hand and state your name if you'd like to speak, but we'll address anybody that... Anybody who needs anything. Um, so we're just gonna start with, um, we'll look at the minutes first and then we're gonna jump down to the school safety project since Chris is here, and then kinda go from there. So, did anybody have any changes with the minutes from last time?
I did not.
I didn't either.
Let me open up my thing, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I don't think I did, I wanna double check. Uh, the only thing I saw was that the vision for our graduates is not the updated one.
Oh, wow, dang.
Um, so I thought we should, just because I think it's on the agenda template, like on Newfield's agenda template. So, we should just update it with our current adopted SAE 16 minute.
Could catch, I did not catch that.
So, we should change it in our regular agenda as well.
In the, yeah, in the, um...
And did we get the links put up, um?
Yes.
We did, okay, I didn't go back to check.
That's all right, yes.
Okay, um, okay, then I am going to, um...
One more.
No, you're fine.
That was on the agenda.
You're good.
The...
My principal's report.
On the principal's report, I just, I put a highlight and I don't, I don't know what I said here. Uh, this was number seven, Ms. Griffith added that this year has been better due to being fully staffed. And I just don't remember, I don't remember it's that. It might've been like a summary of what you said, but I don't know that you said.
I do remember you said that, but I can't, it was in reference to something and I don't remember.
Yeah, I do remember you saying that, I just don't remember the context.
I just felt like for the purposes of public record as a doc, I don't know that that was, I don't remember that being... This year has been better is sort of a very...
Potentially, potentially, uh, MTSS asked that we were leaving specialists.
Maybe that's what it was, I feel like that's what we...
That's what you were implying.
Maybe just include that, I don't know, I felt like...
That's a good call, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, no, you're fine.
So, what do you wanna change it to? Due to proper services being administered? Or something?
I didn't say that.
Ms. Griffith said that this year has been better since we had a...
Additional staff?
I think maybe, we was talking about transition, I feel like it was...
Bob, did you wanna look at the recording and then kind of offer up a change to it with Ellen?
It's not a substantive change, it's just, I think, that particular sentence.
Sure.
Okay. So, then, uh... Make a motion to approve as amended?
Well, we can't until...
So, you wanna look at the end and then we'll put it in?
At the end of, later on in the meeting?
Yeah, like, yeah, at the very end of the meeting, we can just pull it up real quick. Okay, alright, so we'll hold off on that. Okay, so, um, alright, sorry. Um, then, we're gonna go to the school safety part of it.
So, I, I can, would you like me to speak to that?
Yes, yes, please.
So, at the last meeting, you know, I, from what I recall, um, I came to the board with some additional information based on the September meeting and the feedback that I received there with regards to our discussion on the safety project. And then, I, you know, we talked about some further information last month and then that led to additional questions. And I think in the interest of wanting to be efficient with our time and making sure that we have all of the information so that you folks can make an informed decision, I asked Dr. Andruski to attend our meeting today so that he can answer some of the lingering questions that everyone had, just to refresh our memories, especially some questions around additional quotes for the project and what that might look like. Um, at the last meeting, last month's meeting, I spoke also about the potential for a construction manager and that that was an option, but again, I lacked some of the specifics with regards to the process. So, Chris is here as our resident expert in that area.
Thank you, and I don't go resident expert, but with multiple experience, I don't think anybody's a resident expert in construction, but just wanted to offer like some feedback. So, you, the board identified the safety plan and a project, and what we tried to do is encompass as many things into that safety project as you could, that would help out the full envelope of this, of this building and the facility. Parking lot, crossing, um, crossing to a safer area, uh, more lighting, um, flow of traffic. So, all of those things were considered. When we did that, we contracted with TF Rand, which is a, is an engineering firm, and they're the ones that get school. Anytime you do a building project, whether it be outside or inside, you typically have an engineer that's going to, that you're gonna work with, you also have an architect. So, TF Rand was working kind of like our construction manager, but they don't have the depth that most construction managers do. Most construction managers, so I've used like EEI, which is one of the bigger construction managers for all the schools, especially for renovations and build projects, they have an estimator, which really estimates the cost. They have their own architects, civil engineers, and different types of engineers that are part of their company to look at, the different scopes of it. They typically start out with a large scope because they're either doing that at a very low rate, or in this case, that's where Martini Northern got involved, because they were a community partner, they heard about the project, they're really good with TF Rand, and they wanted to give us some, some feedback on what a estimated cost at a really high level could be so that the board could understand that and then that the community would have the ability to give some input on that. And that's where we landed with that 1.8. We had a couple of renditions, I think we started out close to 2.2, and then we said, well, let's, let's bring this back. And that's really, that's pretty typical of any type of construction, uh, process. So, again, that 1.8, I know that's a really large number, but it's encompassing a lot of things. And I think Ellen will talk about some of those things that would be included in it that has to be discussed in your budget, you know, at some point when you're looking at a full three, five, or 10-year facilities plan. We know this building is, is been added on and there's different intricacies inside and out that, that need to be addressed and should be addressed as we're looking at the due diligence. So, you have a couple of options, you've done some community feedback, I've attended that, and again, I think we, everyone has said, 1.8 million dollars, and we got a lot on the site work, right, and the drainage. The, the change in how you drain and you get flow out of different areas has changed to where it was so that really had to talk about retention water, retention ponds, and again, these were part of that scope of that work at a really high level. So, I know there was conversations, can we, can we whittle that number down? You can, but you can do additional testing, like are we gonna hit granite? But every time you do additional testing, there's a cost with that. So, we, when we gave that large estimate, it didn't have like the drilling, it didn't do your, um, conservation survey, it did do your, your boundary survey, so those were included in that initial work. They gave you a large, uh, number to work from. Typically, that number after you've had community conversations, if you're accepted, and I don't think we're all like, yes, that's the number, we always wanna see it lower, right? You would bring that to the community, you'd have the public hearing because you put it as a ward or however you wanna fund it. So, you'd have to have a, a hearing on that, on that ward, specific ward article, because it's gonna need to be bonded in some capacity. Uh, so you have to do that before you're, you put it onto your ballot to be voted on. However, you could bring in and hire a construction manager and say, you wanna whittle this down even more? That's gonna be a significant cost. So, you're gonna get multiple drawings, you're gonna get multiple tests, so it's really, what does the board want? Do you, do you want addition to try and bring it down, is that some of the concerns the community had? That is a cost, or do you go through the process that is pretty typical? Uh, we do a lot with EEI and VanWolff does a lot of our building construction. The 109 renovations they've done for the last, you know, 15 years, this is the process they use. Because when you get to that, that bottom boat of March, you have a large guaranteed maximum price. Now, 1.8 is what you would put out there for your bid. That process or that price cannot go over 1.8 million dollars. Anybody that wants to bid on it knows, hey, we're gonna do our homework. So, they're gonna put in to get you a bid that probably gonna be more competitive than that. And so, that's where you're gonna have multiple companies bidding on that to drive it down. In that 1.8, there's also gonna be contingency, so when Martini Northern did, they did it at a very conservative level, right? So, they're, they're just taking into account like X amount of days with, with your heavy equipment, X amount of days for, for your groundwork, X amount of days, and again, depending on the size of the crew, does it go faster? You know, it's not gonna go any slower because that's the cost to them. So, that's where you get your competitive nature. So, really, the, the question to the board is, where do you wanna go? Do you want to try and get more numbers? Is it the right time for this school and the community to do this project with other things going on? Or do you put the 1.8 knowing that if it passes by the town, the next process is you put an RFP out for your construction firm, which would include that construction manager piece and get more drawings. They're gonna dive in, they're gonna look at your electrical, they're gonna look at your, your, your retention, uh, ponds, they're gonna look at your sloping, they're gonna look at, you do need to do a tier rope, because in the initial plan we had, we had to build up some, a couple of different tiers. Anytime you're putting, you know, walls and concrete, it's adding up to your, to your side. Do you not wanna do a full payment? You know, some of the pavement here is good, in that, in that process, we had full pavement of the whole building and then the parking lot. So, we talked about that, you know, so then you really have the control of what you do, but it only can be in that price range of that 1.8 million. And, you know, any money that they don't, they don't spend on it, it comes back to you. And you can use it on either future improvements in your facilities, or you, you give it back because you have no stake in that. So, that's really where you're at in the process. My, my one caution, so we, we're doing this right now in Stratton. We had a building project that we've had on the books for years, and that number came in very large, and it was a large scope, and they went through the whole process, and the board said, we can't support a number of 40 million dollars of where it came at. So, they said, we wanna support a million, 50 million. We've heard from the community that's where we were at, and that's what we'd like to put onto a bond. They switched construction managers, and so now we've put out an RFP, but we are still rushing right now to get all the scopes, to get the plan, to get community conversations of what that 50 million dollars is gonna look like in that school. So, that is what we're working on to be able to get to that public hearing, to bring it to the bond, uh, for the public hearing on the bond, and then bring it to the task teams at 15 million, so we have community conversations, so everybody in the town is trying to move it out. But again, there's, there's your, there's some of the, um, possibilities that you have for this safety plan. So, just wanted to give you some background feedback and take questions so that you can try to make the best decision as possible.
I have a question about the bid specifically. What, if, if we were to put it out on, um, it, it's voted by the town and it passes, and then we go out to bid, is it, do we throw a big fishnet out there and anybody can bid it? How does the bidding process work?
So, you do a request for proposals.
Yes.
So, we would put that out, so we put that on our website, and we put that out with construction managers. I mean, obviously, I'm working with construction managers now. You're gonna see Martini Northern, who's right here, probably gonna bid on it, that's why they wanted to help out. Typically, when they start the pro boarder work, they know what they're getting into, but they're gonna know a lot more so that, and obviously, tends to give them an advantage of what they're knowing, but you will get a large net. We would post it in our, in our paper, post it wherever you wanna post it. We also do a lot of reach out and say, hey, we've got an RFP out there, here's the timeline, would you be interested in? So, like in Stratton, we had four proposals, um, and there was about five of us that reached out to five other firms who were like, that project's too big for me right now, that project doesn't fit my timeline right now, really interested in the work, can I have an extension on our RFP process? No, because we're so short for time. So, we had about, um, seven to nine firms who were interested, um, to do that work. And again, they're just doing the construction management phase for us right now so that we can get the, the numbers as, as tight as possible to bring to the town of Stratton for, if it passes.
Right.
And then they'll, we'll have another bid, who's gonna be the construction company that would...
So, if the construction, um, okay, so, because you kind of presented it as two different things. One, if we could do a construction, the potential would be to do a construction manager now and go out and get more quotes and everything, but that's a cost. But if we go with the 1.8 on the ballot, it passes, that construction, I just wanna make sure I understand it right, that construction manager cost would be included in that 1.8?
Yeah, you, you didn't build that into your RFP. So, we worked with our, with our lawyers, draft up, what's the scope of work you want done so that they understand it? And then that's what they bid on. So, they're gonna bid not only on, you know, whatever, you know, modifications you're gonna make to the outside and the safety of the building, but they'll also, that would be the contingency of reviewing it. Then you typically have weekly meetings about the project, you know, wanna make sure, oh, can we start at June 1st? No, because we still have kids here, right? So, that's where Suzie comes in and talks about, the best time to start is June 26th. We have no kids here, we're not gonna have staff here, if we need to do stuff for PD, we'll do it at the SAU. So, she has time to plan, where can we do that? You know, we don't have summer school here, if we did, you know, could we get kids off-site? So, you're, you're working with that timeframe, then you get a scope of work, you know, bid out, like here's where it comes, because the other part is, we get back to school August 20th, are you gonna be ready as it may sink? You know, so those would be the things that, that you would work on, on a weekly process. They'll wanna get in here and start doing it as soon as possible, they'll talk about the different phases. We'll start with construction work over here, clearing, then we'll work on our different tier levels, then we'll work on our drainage, then the last thing they would do is put the, the driveway in. And I'm just saying that so out of turn, but they will give you a phased-out system of what the work would look like.
Because one of the things that, um, has been brought up by the community is making sure that, um, in the bidding process, local, which I know, um, TF Rand and Martini, that they're local, but making sure that local businesses in town are able to be part of that RFP process.
Yep.
Okay, that's why I, I found the answer to the question.
Yeah, so Stratton, we put it out in our newsletter, uh, we put it out in the community forum, we put it out on Facebook. So, we tried to hit every type of social media aspect, we hit, um, we were late to put it in. So, if, by knowing it now, if that's where you want, putting it into CECOS online and things like that, that's where we did a lot more, but we would do reach out as well. So, that's why I would, well, if it does pass, we'd talk to Mr. Lister, hey, who's the companies that you work with that do construction on the outside? Right, and let's, let's talk to them. I just had a company today that, hey, I heard you're doing, uh, work in Stratton, can we still bid? I might go a little bit, A-ball, but... So, there, there is companies that you would reach out to, to cast the biggest debt possible, as you said, to get that, those bids as competitive.
Okay, cool.
Um, that's really helpful. I think we pieced together most of that information before, but it's helpful to hear it sort of in one clip from somebody who's done and is currently working on projects, so thank you. I still have some pending questions from last time that I don't know if you were waiting to now to ask them as far as, um, you know, scenario B, so scenario B being...
Yes.
Yeah, so, if we were to put, say, we went this whole process with, um, the bond, and it went, it went to the town, and it got on the, the ballot in March, and it, um, didn't pass. I don't want to be in a situation where we are literally, literally right back at the same spot with no money to spend on looking at alternate. And that's how I understand it, because we don't have any budgeted items for like planning of doing a project in our budget. I just got the freshest one, so I didn't look, but I don't think it's in there. Um, and so, my question was, A, is it a possibility, like legally speaking with our, with all the RSAs to put on? If Article X, you know, with this bond does not pass, would the town appropriate X dollars to have the school hire somebody to help come up with an alternate?
Like do the construction manager?
Do the construction manager piece to come up with a smaller, because we don't have an alternate, in my understanding, um, bid for a different kind of project that wouldn't do. And so, if we don't have that option, I think the only other option I foresee happening next year is having more town forums to say, this really is needed, and this is the number that it is, and trying to do the, um, more explaining as opposed to making changes. And so, I just wanna understand if that is a viable option, and if so, what is that amount that is reasonable to put on?
Right, so if you put on, it's how you word the word.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the big part, that's where we work with our legal team and GRA to make sure it's legally acceptable in how the wording is. So, typically, if you put in to build a sidewalk and do all these walls as part of that safety plan, can't do any of that. All of that is off the table review. However, you do have budget lines for contracted service. There's nothing for you, because you have it in your general budget, to work with contractors outside of the scope to talk about facilities development. There's nothing that permit that you could already budget that. You don't have 1.8 million dollars in your budget to do this facility, you don't have to do this.
But I guess we're wondering what the, what the cost of like a construction manager is, or like just that piece, right?
So, I can give you ballpark, so we're, we're spending, you know, $25,000 right now from last Thursday to get us through March for that 15 million dollar project in, um, in Stratton.
Do you see what I'm saying? Like I, I, that could've been a hundred thousand, I don't know how much that costs. That's why I need some sort of tangible, I know it's Stratton, it's a different project, so, but that's...
So, I would also go back and look, we, we spent on TF Rand, uh, last year to get us to that 1.8 million.
With 19?
Yep, so you, you're gonna probably be about that.
About that.
Like five digits, right?
Twenty to 25,000 dollars to try and give you more in-depth scopes. And that is if they say, okay, well, I can only give it to you, but I gotta be drilling, so now that's $40,000 to drill, right? And that is what we heard from TF Rand, we didn't include that because that would bump our cost up, but, you know.
Yeah, because I think, um, what we talked at length about in the last meeting was, we didn't, we didn't want, um, if, you know, if the community passes it, great, if they don't pass it, but still are showing an interest in the project moving forward, but want more information, is there a, like a, a second warrant article that says if this doesn't pass, we can expend this much, this dollar amount?
I guess I didn't actually say that, yeah, thank you.
Is that, is that what you're trying to say, right?
Typically, not.
Not, okay.
Because then you're giving them an option A and option B, right?
Two separate words.
So, it's not, so it would be up to us, it sounds like, to include some dollar figure in contracted services?
I think that would be the most streamlined approach.
In the, in the actual budget?
In that budget, again, it's voted on.
Right, right.
If the budget doesn't pass, you know, the GRC will have that in there to be able to do that either. So, you could write it for $25,000 for contracted services for, um, a facilities...
Facilities in percent, uh...
Just a facilities audit, which couldn't include both inside and out, right? Because that is one thing with what we've been struggling with with, you know, with a couple of rooms here is, should we do a full facilities audit?
Yes.
Yeah, I just needed to have answered that question, I didn't wanna not ask it, that would've bothered.
It's a great question, you know.
And I did include, as you folks received, the, this information just yesterday, per your request, the overall facilities recommendations from Rusty. However, that is not the same thing as what Chris is speaking to, which would be a much more in-depth audit from a company that is, you know, that that's their area of work and what they specialize in, whereas Rusty gave us a, you know, more broad overview. So, we'll talk through that later on in the agenda.
Okay, so, alright.
Thank you for providing that. Um, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Um, in the Stratton experience, we call it that, when they went from, what was it, 50, 40 million?
40 million dollars.
40 to 15. Any guidance as to how that number conversation occurred?
So, we, we built, uh, an external building committee that had been internal all the way up until June. And from my previous experience working at a renovation project in a middle high school for seven years where I had building project, we had an external committee, and on that committee, we had, uh, general contractors, uh, HVAC experts. And so, they were looking at the scope, they're like, we, we feel we can do this in a different avenue. And so, they were giving a lot of advice because they were expertise, and that helped drive the board to say, okay, you know, we had this one proposal, but maybe we should look it up in the proposals. So, they, they actually sat down, looked at some of the proposals, looked at the numbers, and we had an exact crisis. So, some of the educational spaces that we were looking at are no longer there, right? But your systems in Stratton, your HVAC, which is 30 years old, your boiler, your heaters, any AC units, some, uh, life safety, your elevators, things to upgrade, those are all part of that plan with additional, uh, educational spaces that were made for priorities. So, there was a give and take of what, what do we need that we can help out the school, but we're also some flexibility and some prioritization to get us down from 40 million to 15 million.
That's helpful. So, to me, that, that, there exists a way to do something other than nothing if Article doesn't pass, which makes me feel better, uh, knowing that. I assume there has to be another method to get there. As you might've heard in, in previous conversations, I was like, why, you know, why can't we just, as a board say, we want to put no more than 1.5, you know, and then I understand there's reasons, you wanna be able to back up your, your, your dollar figure, so...
And on that note though, just because it's related to, um, the 1.8, when you said, um, if, if it doesn't hit the 1.8, we have options to give back or use towards other, um, projects that maybe follow the scope?
As long as it goes into how you wrote that word.
Got it, okay.
By writing as a safety plan, you can have it to do any safety upgrades to this building. You wanna put in more cameras, you wanted to put in, uh, speed bumps, whatever it do, as long as it's showing a demonstration to the safety and it's written on that original hospice of how the board was written, you can do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not that I'm saying we would wanna do that, I mean, I just wanted to make sure we understand the different options.
Well, because right, there, there might be some thing that comes up that we didn't know about, that we need to send it on, that it wasn't in the original, and it's related to safety, so...
Yeah.
Yes, it's all connected.
I feel much better.
See, as we go through the budget more in-depthly as well, we will see that, I'll speak to it with more detail also.
Jenny, do you have any questions? I felt like I spoke a lot, sorry.
No, I, I'm familiar with the process, so I'm okay, thank you, though.
Yes, no, I appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else on the school safety project? Do you have anything?
May I ask a question?
Of course.
With a construction manager, one of the benefits would be potentially getting a, a lower cost for the project or as a more detailed estimate, is that one of the reasons that you consider hiring them?
You'd want a construction manager, you know, with a...
Regardless, yeah, so it's not necessary to reduce the, uh, 1.8 million to a more powerful number, a priority.
I think you're asking two questions, so the, the construction manager, if you hire one now, they could do a more in-depth study to try and reduce, if you go with the 1.8, you want a construction manager which would look at cost and make sure deadlines, again, to keep you on track and tell you...
Yeah, I've asked you the first question, about, what's the likelihood that if you hired somebody now, that you would actually...
I would tell you not to do that, right now, you will not meet the timeline.
Yeah.
No, the timeline.
Because you're gonna need to get that passed, you're gonna be timed, and they're gonna need at least a month for that to be drawn.
Yeah, that's why I asked the clarifying question of like, is the cost including the, we're, we're still getting it no matter what, it's just the timeline piece of it.
Jenny, furthermore, I don't know that we have budgeted money to do that, if we even wanted to this year, or in my opinion.
We don't have it.
No, we don't. No, but that's why we talked about, like, it would be, it would be the backup plan for next year, so it's...
Right.
That's why we would discuss it in this proposed budget as well.
I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, yes, we, we don't have any money. We don't have the money to spend it this year anymore.
Right.
Unless there's something magical I don't know about.
Thank you for doing your due diligence.
We're being fully transparent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Are those sensors for anybody who's back there?
Yes, they are.
They're...
It's fine with your light.
Uh, it doesn't matter. You guys don't mind?
Nice.
They're very cool, and I am not, so...
Okay, so, yeah.
And then about the budget, for our budget advisory?
Yes, let's go to facilities, um, yes, yes, because it's gonna come into play with all the things.
The budget. And I did bring some physical copies of Rusty's project review plan, if anybody would like it.
Add one, just a scribble on?
Yes.
Thank you.
And some folks as well. Okay. So, I, I wanna give an update with regards to the roof situation slash, slash facilities, again, it's all connected. That I made sure that the board was informed with latest status of the situation, which is that, you know, the two rooms, 108 and 109 are closed off for the time being. And the next step with regards to that, once we noticed that the smell was not dissipating and it was in fact, um, still very much present, I organized a collaborative problem-solving meeting, is what I called it. And we had all of our contractors who have been helping throughout the last year to assess the situation, um, come in, and we all met together, as well as we had a representative from RPF, not RFP, RPF, which is an environmental, um, testing company. And we also had a representative, the supervisor, Scott, from Industrial Roofing Company. Chris Andruski was there as well, in addition, Rusty Lister and John Spinelli, our assistant facilities director. So, we had all, and Suzie, of course. So, we had all of the wonderful lines in one room so that we could talk through the chronology of the situation, what had already been done, so that, again, we were just all on the same page, operating with, with as much information as possible in alignment, so that then we could engage in some problem-solving around what are we going to do next? Because we need a solution, right? 12 months to, the 12 months that we have been through is a lengthy period of time to have endured and yet still not have a solution to our dilemma. Um, so, it was a very effective meeting, folks were really helpful in terms of, you know, we engaged in some... So it was a very effective meeting. Folks were really helpful in terms of, you know, we engaged in some hypothesizing, we engaged in some just solution-based discussion. And where we left it for now is that we have, RFP has come in to the rooms. Again, we closed off the rooms so that we are able to make sure that we are, we are dealing with a contained environment. So again, some baseline data. And then in addition to that, we have RFP, RPF, excuse me, RPF came in and did some additional testing for non-organic matter with regards to air quality. And we should be getting the results of that back within the next couple of weeks. And our team will meet again to then discuss the results of that assessment and engage in a discussion around what to do from there. Of course, we did come up with some other potential solutions. But again, we're taking it one intervention at a time to make sure that we're conducting a thoughtful, you know, research-based analysis, if you will, of the situation. Some other, you know, discussion points that were made at that meeting were with regards to, you know, perhaps we need to do some more spray foam insulation in the other room, because it was done in one room and not the other. So could that perhaps be causing the odor to be trapped in one room? But then, because it's trapped, it's also still seeping into the other room because it has nowhere to go. And so is that a potential situation where we need to put more spray foam in so that we are comparing apples to apples between the two rooms? Another potential solution is, you know, an additional fan in the ceiling to circulate the air. A discussion and why I'm bringing it up is because it's, again, as you heard me say tonight, it's all connected, that in terms of our air exchange here at Enfield's Elementary School, this is clearly an older building. And so our air exchange is not what it is in more recent buildings that have been built in more recent years. And so, you know, if we're looking at the long-term sustainability of this building, we, you know, best practice would be to have an air recovery unit so that we are exchanging the air in a manner that is up to current best practices. So those are very expensive. And in addition to that, they require additional amperage for our electricity, which we do not have the capacity for that here at Enfield's. So one thing is leading to the other, and we are being really thorough. I'm confident to say that. And we're taking it one step at a time to make sure that we're effectively going to be able to solve the problem. And it is, it could be, you know, something that is, we're just, we're needing to check one box before we can move on to the next. And, you know, ideally, there are cost-effective solutions to resolve the odor. I believe that that is the case, that, you know, once we have some additional data, again, our wonderful team of making credible lines will come back together to continue to brainstorm. But it is leading to larger questions with regards to the sustainability and the long-term facilities plan for this school, which is why, you know, you'll see, you know, Rusty included in the 24, 25 plan here some of the costs to potentially spray foam room 109. Again, we are taking no, like, we are not doing any additional interventions right now except additional testing from RPF. And, you know, another, let's see here, what else? So, you know, again, like even the additional testing from RPF is going to cost us additional funds to get that taken care of. We are working on getting a boat to update the electrical supply, you know, the air exchange. What I believe Rusty meant there on the top here is the HVAC air change. That's what I spoke about in terms of the air recovery unit. And again, that's long-term planning. But that's, that's high, high cost from what I understand, a six-figure amount for an air recovery unit, for example. Because we would want to make sure that we are exchanging the air in a way that is most effective, obviously not just in the two rooms where there's concern, but throughout the building.
What did we do during COVID? Didn't we do upgrades during COVID? No?
In terms of air change?
Yeah, I thought there was some. We did do a few, but they weren't specifically for, like, we didn't replace any specific air exchange. We had it tested and things along those lines, but it wasn't like a ton of things. We, okay, there was a talk about putting, when kids drop, when people drop kids off, to have non-idling vehicles so that you're not sucking in exhaust, things like that. But it was just testing to make sure that air was clean enough or being circled, cycled through enough.
Okay, so I guess that's my question. If we've tested it, and it didn't need to be replaced, then, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be replaced now, but.
I thought it was like filters. I thought it had to do with filters.
There's all those HEPA filters.
Yeah. I just remember a whole thing.
In the existing system.
That we got paid for three grand.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't for air, it was air quality, not, it was filters and stuff.
Filtration.
Filtration. Yeah, thank you.
Filtration versus exchange.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand.
We weren't on the board then, so it's hard, but.
Well, no, but I remember the lengthy conversations about it, so that's why I'm, I'm asking, like, if, I just want to make it clear to the public, like, what we have done, because somebody's going to ask that question, because it was talked about a ton during COVID, versus what needs to happen, I guess.
Yeah, and I can speak to, you know, I was very much involved in handling COVID throughout all of SEU 16, so I can speak to, you know, while I wasn't on the board here, I can speak to what was, what we were doing for most of the building and what our philosophy was in terms of how to intervene. So that's the latest update on the room. And then you can see here how it plays into the overall facilities needs for the building. I mean, again, there's more to come. I will anticipate having additional information for our December meeting. We're, again, back to, you know, we're taking it one step at a time. And then also, just as we look at this facilities, as you heard Chris reference, that should the board decide to move forward with the safety project, some of the facilities needs are encompassed in that, such as the, we do need to repaint the driveway. You know, Rusty put that on there ideally for next fiscal year, but that is not included in the budget.
I was going to ask, are any of these numbers included in, in the proposed budget right now?
We included $50,000 in the proposed budget.
Okay.
Up from 40. I think 40 was this year, and I think, I think it was 60 in 2023, 40, no, sorry, 60 in 2024, 40 in 2025, and then we put in 50. But it's not, you're not going to see a straight 50 on that line because we also put in 10% of the cooperative employees that's been insisting here.
Right.
So we had, he did have a better line to do it, because he's not an employee and he feels he would be paid as a contracted service contractor. So we put it on to repair and maintenance side since that's a contracted service line. So on that line is 10% of that employee from Co-op plus a flat $50,000.
What more can I say?
It would be under, it's on repair maintenance page. It's going to be on your 26 hundred sections, page six, about three quarters of the way down.
I love this new format, by the way.
And the reason for that is so that, because, so that we can be more proactive in terms of addressing the needs of this building, because we have had two custodians who are wonderful and very skilled. And, you know, they are not, their charge is not to be the facilities managers here at Enfield's. So that's what that additional cost would be for us to have somebody to help oversee facilities.
And they're doing the same thing in 1012, same person, same percent.
Yeah, I think as our buildings get older, we, our needs change.
Ellen, one thing, can I ask?
Yeah, of course.
I was going to ask the question, but it looks like it's actually already in 24, 25, is the cost of spray foaming the other ceiling?
Yes.
Personally, I think that makes sense if the two rooms have, not that I'm proposing that, but I just want to know how much it was. And so it's on, for $4,000, it would be, that's an estimate of how much it would be to spray foam the ceiling of the other room, so that it was consistently spray foamed, those two rooms.
Yes.
Do we have the mechanism by which to do that this year?
We have $40,000 in the budget this year.
Yes.
But what is not, what is not appropriated currently?
So that's maybe. So in your board pack, glasses, oh, yes. Repair and maintenance, well, so so far, your day spent, $29,888. So it's really not a whole lot.
Right. We still have.
Is that, does that also include what we did with the roof?
No, because we took that out of the.
No, I know. I just didn't know if it had hit yet, because it didn't go in and out.
It did, it did go in and out.
Did it come out? Because I, I was like, I know it went in, because we saw it last time. I just didn't know if it came back out.
Yeah, so on the summer engage, I, under repair maintenance, I said that $54,847 was coming out into the trust recently. An apology for not going in the board pack. I sent it to Sharon saying this was the financial attached to the room file for her.
Okay, it happens.
So we have these.
Thank you for the.
And we are continuing to assess them.
But none of, none of these numbers facility-wise are in this proposed budget, right?
We just put a flat $50,000.
Just a flat $50,000.
So Rusty will do as much as he can this year.
On a flat $50,000 on top of what we normally would have budgeted, or just a flat $50,000?
Just a flat $50,000. So on the repair maintenance, you see just $50,000 plus the one, 10% of the cooperative.
Right, right.
So that, you know, again, this is your first review of the budget, so it's going to be a discussion point for her to weigh in on.
And it was, I'm sorry, what was it last year? You put a flat $50,000 in for the proposed, what was it last, this year?
Oh, so $40,000. So on that line, it's on, a three hundred, a little bit three quarters of the way down, page six, you'll see the proposed budget is $62,268. Current year is $40,000. The year, last year was $60,000. And on that budget, $60,000, we spent $60,633.
And we, our trust, our maintenance trust has about, well, about $11,000 left, but I think. So if we have.
Yes, 12, 13.
Thank you. I don't have that pulled up in my lap back.
No, you're good.
So, you know, another thing to consider is that should we have, you know, when we write the warrant articles for this coming, for fiscal year '26, we want to think about being able to add more, should we have an assigned fund balance into the maintenance trust to try to build it up?
Is this the first time we had this in recent years?
To my knowledge, yes.
So to that end, thank you for.
Yes, thanks to Rusty. Yes, he gives all the credit. Yes, I believe that, you know, we've had documents before, but I don't, I, I, this is the first time I've seen something like this, so I think it's really helpful.
I think he mirrored what he does for the Co-op. He did this for the Co-op.
No, this is great. Okay, so when, when you, it's a couple of weeks for the results?
Yes, and then we still, then we need to meet again as a team to engage in our cross, our collaborative problem solving process.
Okay, so do we think, so that's my, I guess that's my part, do you think you'll be able to meet prior to our next board meeting?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Yes.
And then there's like a holiday in there?
I know, we're going to try.
Okay. Because I, I was just thinking, if we want to try to move on this.
Right, that's, we can't direct folks to do the spray, but we can say, what is the decision? How is the decision made from that, those group of brains? Was it that we won't make any decisions until we meet again about any interventions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all, I just wanted to.
Yes, absolutely. We just, it was one, one intervention at a time and pause on everything else until we have additional data to consider.
Yeah, it would be really great if we could do our best to meet for the next meeting, especially because we're going to be, if it's a bigger problem and we need to, like, budget and we need, yeah, we're going to need to.
Ellen, my experience with working with labs all the time at ORC is that it's really important to continue to call them to ask for updates, because it's possible that the results could be sitting in the queue somewhere. And maybe somebody didn't hit enter.
Thank you.
They can send preliminary data. Just, that's.
Be a squeaky wheel.
I love all the lab people in the world, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of, like, systems that hold back until the final result comes out.
So along those thinking, along that lines, if we meet on December 4th, just obviously quite early, do we want to push the December meeting potentially, just to make sure that you have enough time to make sure that you've got everything ready for us to make a decision on? Or do we have other options? We just want to see what happens in December? Because I'd rather know about this when we're putting the budget together versus waiting until January or having another meeting.
I'm confident that I can get the team to meet prior to December 4th.
That's helpful, even if the results aren't back. If you can, if we can have.
I'm confident that we'll have the results back as well. I am.
I'm happy.
I hear your, I hear your concerns. So should that change, I can reach out.
Reach out and we can potentially.
Think about moving our meeting.
Okay.
I, that is the, that has been the plan.
Okay, great.
And the representative from the environmental testing company was also confident that we would have results. Again, so let me follow up, and should that change, I'll notify the board right away.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, because I, I, I agree, like, if, if, if something is delayed and I'd rather have all the information before we go into the, like, final voting and stuff on the budget.
Yes.
For that, for sure. I want us to have all the picture.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so. Can we ask questions about these specific things? Do you have any, I guess?
Yes.
So I, I saw the LED lighting.
Yes.
It's a giant.
Yes.
Cost.
Yes.
Would, tell me the reasoning.
Yes.
For LED.
Because it's more efficient and it will save money in the long run.
The town did something similar, and it's been a huge, I feel like I keep hearing the sideboard say how, what a good decision that was.
Yeah, it's the recommendation for all of our schools here in SEU 16, again, of the best practice and has a way to be more energy efficient and cost-effective.
Okay.
There's also a rebate on it right now.
I was just going to ask.
Yes, thank you for adding that.
Dr. Endersky's still here, because he knows there's a good timeline on it. And I know that timeline's coming to an end.
I know the timeline on it. The timeline is happening, is we need to, let's see, get it in here for '25, '26.
Yeah, and I think it has to be early in '25, '26.
'25, '26 budget cycle or '25, '26 fiscal cycle? So the calendar or budget?
Budget, but I think it needs to be early in that budget year. I don't know the exact date. I know Dr. Endersky, that was still here.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of a moot point, because the whole point is just that it needs to be.
It needs to be in this budget.
This whole year's budget. When the dollars happen.
Yeah, when it happens, doesn't.
I think it just needs earlier in that fiscal year.
So the purchase needs to happen in next year's budget, early on next year.
And in the current, you know, we do, we, again, our $50,000 number is not taken into account this additional.
Right, that, that's why I was asking the rationale behind it, because the, the rationale is that it would save us money in the long run, electricity-wise, too.
We really decided to up the repair maintenance line from, again, it was 40 for this fiscal year. We upped it to 50 for next fiscal year, more as a placeholder pending this conversation based on the larger scope of the needs.
Right, I mean, in 50, upping it to 50,000, but having 190,000 of potential expenses.
So in that 50, sorry, Jane, I didn't.
No, 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 I'm thinking, so please go.
But in the 50,000, like, what is the, like, that 50,000 line item? Like, if, if we were to budget 190,000, which is all of this stuff, does that cover everything we would need for repair maintenance? Or is there, or what else, what else is in that line?
So that would cover everything that goes here on the plan. I mean, there's always going to be unplanned things that have.
Yes.
I don't want to say, I don't want to, that's not real good, but how like if your boiler broke or something, that would have to go to that line.
Right, right. Which we don't have.
Right now, your trust is very low.
Right now.
So any repair and maintenance to the building, any really project goes to that line. And so what that document in front of you does is it lists out what Rusty would like to do the project. But at the same time, realizing if you do 190,000 dollars in one year, 10,000 in the next, it's going to make your tax rate go. So we tried to keep the amount. So we tried to keep the amount consistent to the best that we can, knowing that we probably needed more than forty thousand, that's why we put in the fifty thousand dollar number, in hopes to do as many of those projects as we can.
This is not even going to touch this, that's my, that's my point is.
And that's the exact point that I actually.
It's gonna get really light now.
If we did the LD, that's forty of the fifty.
Right. But I mean, we're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar repaid, which hopefully would get sucked into that, the big, bigger warrant article, so that would not be there, but if it doesn't.
It would still be in the budget.
It would still be in the budget.
Which means that you could get other things done, but then the year following, you're going to have that dip. So it's either put it in to make sure that it gets done regardless of what happens to the warrant article, and be careful of that tax rate. It, it's a good hedge, or take it out and potentially do, put it to twenty six, twenty seven.
I can just face it. Actually, I don't know.
I, well, you could put another warrant article on it and open up another trust fund for, you know, specifically a pavement project and, and fund it half this year, half next year.
That's true, or you could just put it in the maintenance trust fund and fund it right now.
True, yep.
It's just better to be more generic than original.
Right, but you'd have to appropriate.
Yeah, for sure.
Not appropriate, you'd have to put that on the warrant article to be able to put it in there, right?
Yeah, which is appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's options here to deal with that paving project.
Right, yeah.
Which, I mean, the way I'm thinking about it, we make sure that that project is in that maintenance fund warrant article. Because then we can raise it if the warrant article for your safety project passes, then we don't need to appropriate it. And we can give it back, correct?
So say that again?
If the safety project passes and we raise this through a different warrant article for the maintenance fund, we can say it's up to this, and we can appropriate what we want and give back.
So if it's up to, if you have it available, it goes in. Now, your maintenance fund is very low, so I, I would say if you are gonna put it in it just for paving, you might want to just contribute to have the money in there.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was saying.
That's what she's saying, yeah.
I'm saying if both things happen. If we have this warrant.
Then we end up with a hundred and twenty thousand to use to up for other maintenance.
We could, yep.
Yeah, so I, I guess what, just make sure I understand what you're not, the up to is only to say if you only have ten thousand dollars left over.
Okay, I got it.
If you, if you.
If we have it, we have to put it in there.
Has to go to it.
Okay, great, yeah.
You don't need to pick and choose later.
Okay.
So we can change that, that trust fund article for this year to say up to, if we, if we wanted to, up to the hundred and twenty.
Assuming that we're, you mean for unassigned fund now?
Yeah.
Assuming that we're on your forty thousand.
That, that's what she's saying.
I mean, you, you could put it up to on your plan.
And they just explained, who's explaining that one?
I don't, yeah, I don't know, I, I mean, yeah.
If we have a projection for.
But it's an unassigned fund balance.
I mean, right now it's a hundred and seventy seven thousand, but that's the cost, that, that's, right, right now we don't have any revenue higher than the plan, because I just have the revenue, so if, if we knew about it, I would have planned for it. Uh, so we don't have any revenue higher than the plan at this point. The cost we've encumbered to the best that we can in the year, um, and that southern meeting cost of a hundred and seventy seven thousand, but keep in mind, we don't encumber things like substitutes, because we don't know when that's going to happen.
Right.
So that, so we know there's going to be a level of that. I mean, we, every year we encumber snowplow.
Yeah, right.
We can hopefully release that, but, um.
That's helpful.
I mean, this time, this point in the year, it's really difficult to say.
That's fair.
Thank you, helpful.
You're welcome. That time covers the current year budget.
Yes.
I know, actually it did, you kind of killed two birds with one stone, that was good, um. Okay, so, sorry, um, because we're going out of.
Out of order, right to the.
Order, um.
You've moved to the budget since we have a hard budget.
Yeah, let's, yes, let's move, let's move to the budget, um.
Oh my gosh, welcome, I didn't realize. That's why you're here, thank you.
Well, and for next month, um, we can make it so that we have a budget advisory workshop prior to the meeting, for example, that should the board decide to do that, but to honor your time, we can have it so that we have the budget advisory before the meeting, say from five to six, and then we just say the board meeting will follow completion of the budget advisory workshop.
Yep.
That sounds good.
Okay.
See, I'm going to do, I'm going to start to kind of go through.
Yes, um, it's, especially because we just got another new one.
Yes, so, so what happened is we were still working through numbers, and so we sent that out, and then we made a math class, and it changes today, and we printed it, so the one that you want to be looking at is the one that's four point six six percent, that's the greatest. Ooh, is it, I don't, this is, sorry, I don't know.
No, it's four point six six.
The paper.
Four point six six, yeah, four point six six.
Yep.
Suzie's looking at the wrong one. Sorry, so.
That's the bottom line.
So, in your district, you have two unions, or two collective bargaining agreements. So you have your pairs and you have your teachers, neither are negotiating this year, so they're active CBAs, and so we step in track, all employees are part of the CBA.
Say that again?
So your CBAs, your collective bargaining.
Sorry, no, step in track?
Yeah, so in your salary grids, there's steps and there's tracks.
Okay, got it.
And, and so people step until they get to the top, and then they just recall them. Cost of work. So everybody in here that is in, I think there's only like one person that works here that's not in the union, and she's Susie, um, everyone would be part of the CBA. Um, some other things, the bus contract, we are in.
Do you want to go through the whole thing and then we ask questions?
Well, I was just going to tell you some of the major things, the, the drivers, the contractual things, so like.
Okay, the, that contractual thing I have a question about though, the, the CBAs, because so, the, we voted the teacher four point five this year, and pairs four plus step, right?
So they also always step.
They always step.
They always step.
They don't always track.
So I guess my, so my question is, is because the, the, the percentage doesn't match the four point five. So will it not because of the step in the tracker?
So let me step up, let me step back, so this is group by function, so are you looking at percentage on here?
Yes, that's it.
So what this is, so regular.
But even, even over here.
So we're going to have a change in the people that are filling those roles as well?
No, I understand that, I just didn't think the percentage should go over what that four point five is.
So if you have a change in the personnel during the role, then the percent would be different.
Up or down, depending on who's there.
And we could need to go into non-public.
Okay.
Under B.
Okay, so I, I guess, without talking about specific people, I, I just want to make sure, like, when we voted, the town voted, the way it's written, it said the increase would be seventy three thousand five hundred and eighty nine.
For the people that existed at that point.
At that time, it's this estimate.
Yes, and so since then, the number.
It's changed.
And means the people.
Yeah, we've had.
That's fine.
Couple of.
I want to be able to explain this, because I know I'm going to get that question at the deliberative session, so I want everybody in this room and the budget advisory and the people on the camera, all the people to understand that. That, right there, what you just said, okay.
So the, the people that exist today were stepped in track for the CBA, that will still exist in the twenty six budget.
Okay.
So you want to continue to go through.
So, and it's just. Overall.
So overall, I was looking at this, so this is by function, so you have two funds, you have your general fund and your food service fund. General fund is going to start with the two digits of eleven, the food services fund, fourteen, just to make sure, starts with fourteen. Those two funds are added together to come to your, your, your budget. Then, the next section is a four digit code, which is your function, and that is dictated by the state, and that has to do with all of the world of costs, how we have to report costs, and so what I did is I grouped it by function, so when you see regular education, that's everything under the eleven hundred section, whether it be salaries, supplies, furniture, products. Um, same with special education, that should be the, special education, teacher salaries, aides, tuition, everything that falls under the function. And so what this summary does is it groups by function. Okay? Um, now, the big contractual things that are driven are your CBAs, so most people in this building are on a collective bargaining agreement, they're unionized. Um, another thing is the SAU assessment, that was voted on by the joint board, and that implied the amount of district budgets, so it's not a contract, but it is something that has to be included in here. For transportation, we have what's called a three plus two contract with first student. We're in, we, this would be the fourth year, so it's the first year of that plus two, which has to be mutually agreed upon by both parties. Uh, we did meet with first student the other day, and they are starting their negotiations. So, we've explained to them that we're deep in the budget setting process, and that it's very, very important for us to stay as close a few percent as possible. They are supposed to be getting back to us, so in December, we might have a little bit of change, but I'm really hopeful that, um, it's not much.
Okay.
Um, and then for your health and dental rates, we typically have what's called a GMR, and I think you've heard me talk about this in the joint meetings, that they give us a rate, not a GMR, um, unfortunately a different by plan, so it's not just a straight, so if we have three different health plans, there's three different rates, and so what we did is we looked at where people are today, how many people are getting married, how many people have babies.
Thank God.
Just trying to.
Productive ability.
Trying to.
Team of days.
Without asking people directly. So, uh, because if someone moves from a single to a, a family plan, like between now and next June, which is possible, I mean, that's a twenty thousand dollars spent between a single and a family plan, so we tried to ask people, but not, not being inappropriate. So.
Right.
Um, so, that, those are the increases related to that, um, and so those are the big, big contractual type things, and Susie, I don't know if you want to go through, maybe some of the things that you're asking for in this budget or not asking for in the budget?
I think it's fair to say that in general, it is, it is a, it is a very needs based budget. We have, Suzie has done, and myself included, we've done really, and Molly, and the superintendent as well, that we go through the budget, we have been very fiscally responsible, and we have trimmed where we have felt we could, you know, so this is not the first time, this is not our first draft, just in the.
Right.
Yeah, lots to do.
So, when you look at regular ed, if you just go down the left hand corner of column, regular ed, special education, skip down to guidance services, health services, skip down a few more, media services, those are all CBA. They have, I have nothing to do with contractual budgeting, so that total, um, is a hun, is a hundred thirty four thousand for the changes in regular ed and special ed, and I just want to point out, I think it's appropriate for people to know that one of the reasons why, uh, the change for special education is because we have, um, one teacher that, um, is a point nine, and we're pushing that up to a one full time, there was a special accommodation for a bit of time, and just we would hope that we would never lose that teacher, but if we did, we would have to post, if we ever posted a point nine, we would not get that quality, probably high quality special education, everybody wants a full time position, so.
We need a full time position, based on the needs of the students.
Exactly, and our, in our MTSS model, having that person back to a one point, uh, FTE is important, so that's where that comes from. Student body, if you go back, if we just, the regular education, special education, that's your CBA, your SEL, we don't, we, we don't need, um, that's just a holder at a dollar, our student body activities actually will get on twenty two percent. Again, at your guidance services, eleven percent is your CBA.
Sorry, what is, what's under student body activities?
Um, so that would be our, um, when we do, I'll know, but when we do artists in residence, when we have, um, speakers for our.
So what are we cutting?
Yeah, I was gonna say my question.
I always, I always ask the question, like, what are we cutting from the student?
Well, I'm looking at our actuals, and I cut it down because we haven't been.
We have been spending it, okay.
So I'm just trying to.
Nope, that's.
Look in every nook and cranny of, but that's not, to your point Jenny, us cutting down is not taking away anything from our students.
Okay, that's.
It's just showing a realistic number of what we've spent in our.
Based on actuals, yeah.
Based on actual, okay, that was, that was, yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure we weren't.
Sure. Guidance services, just so you know, to our purposeful people, our character strong, which is our SEL curriculum, is for that licensure, it's a thousand fifteen hundred, or a thousand five hundred. So that's where you see some increase on that. Otherwise, in psych and in professional development, we've gone down. Media, um, that's a CBA. Uh, the school district operations, that's from the SAU, office of the superintendent, and then for office of the principal, that is embodied not only mine, but, um, our school secretary, and again.
Everything that Suzie needs to operate her office, whether it be copyers and printers.
But it's also, it's also the school secretary.
Yes.
And, and longevity that goes in there.
Yep, okay.
So that's why there's an increase that there. Facilities and maintenance, that's the name of the game at this meeting, uh, transportation, that's not us, I mean, that's not under really means, that's at the SAU. Um, same thing with our special education, transportation, we always want to have that in, and need it in there. So that's where we.
Oh, that was my question, do we, uh, sorry, the special ed, um, outside ser, uh, do we have any out of district placement?
No, are you looking at the in district tuition?
Yes.
Yes. We have preschool students that we tuition into another public preschool. And they don't have a preschool here.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, okay.
And this is a point of reference, so your special education trust fund has a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in it, which seems like a lot, because it's actually not.
No, it's not.
No.
Yeah, I said that seems a lot.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Jenny?
Uh, seems a lot.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We, at the last, I remember at one of the meetings, we put in like what our wants were for those cushions. Is there any way to add that column to this, this, um, snapshot of like where we would like it to be?
Goal?
As a goal?
Um, sure, I just don't remember what the goals are.
It was in the deliberative session.
Yeah, I can go look at it, it was from the deliberative in January, we talked, we, I can even look it up, but if we could put, just so when we're talking about this, we don't forget like kind of what our goals are.
We had the recommendations.
The recommendations.
Fund, specific fund, yes, I remember that.
It was down in the, yeah, it was definitely in the deliberative session.
I refreshed my binder, that's why.
Same.
So, um.
Okay.
This is, this is, as far as the lines that I typically control, this is about as tight as we can get with, and on top of that, um, if you read the school board report, we actually were awarded twenty three thousand dollars for grant, which is taken off and out of this budget, because we'll be able to use twenty three thousand for seating and for sensory, um, tools, and so we are trying, I want you to know that we really are trying to be incredibly respectful to our taxpayers and to our, all of our citizens and communities. It's, that is very, very important. And if we, if, and if we cut, we are looking at cutting student experience. student experience and systems in place that, that make a difference.
Support our students, and especially with that locally tiered system to support our frameworks.
That helped. I had a couple of questions and you got most of them. I have like two questions left, but Jenny, did you wanna? I think I started.
No, go ahead. No, uh, no. I'm sorry, I have to go ask the question while she's doing it, else I'll forget. I'm sorry.
The, the trash removal line, it was, of course. Page seven. Like sixth line down. It went down, awesome. Was that a, that it was budgeted higher for this current year and we only used?
Thank you to Dr. Andruski. He actually saw this number a year ago and thought, wow, that's outrageous. And so he, I believe he went out to bed and found somebody else.
We, yes, we moved, I wasn't in the name of the company. We did move companies. And so if you look at the actuals from last year, that was three thousand, three hundred thirty-six. Now, we did, you don't wanna go down to that because we didn't. We did move companies.
Alright, so thank you. So I wanted to just identify things involved with each other. That was one. To that point, I love field trips. I love me a field trip, but that is one that I guess in twenty-four, we didn't spend too much. Was there any reason why we didn't? Like, is, is that an area like the student buy activities that it might make sense if we needed to slice some dollars out? Or is the idea that we had some field trips planned that would go into that? I'm just, I'm asking questions that might be asked. Again, I love a field trip.
Are we bringing back field trips that we?
Well, that, that actually wasn't, that's a good question. It's just twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, it was budgeted as six thousand.
Remember, we're coming out of a pandemic.
Right.
We weren't doing a lot of.
For a while, yeah.
We weren't going out. We did have field trips that were coming into us, in-house field trips. The hope is that we would start being.
Going out again.
I love it and I just wanted that to be shared. That's helpful. And then the last question was, when you had said longevity, so I didn't know what, is that like a?
Been here a long time.
I know what that means, but is that like a, can you just clarify?
Like what it is?
Yeah.
So when people have been here for a period of time, in the collective bargaining agreements, there's a certain amount they get per year. So it'd have to look back, it would have to be a good one, but in some districts, it's like a hundred dollars per year of service. So, or some districts, it's like two thousand between years ten and fifteen, three thousand, yes.
It was a piece in the collective bargaining that we, we negotiated that two years ago.
So I guess that my question is the jump of the.
When they hit a certain threshold, it goes up.
Yes.
Thank you. I just needed to under, I couldn't remember the mechanism. I didn't realize that that was also.
I went and looked at it today.
The new accounting software is actually allowing us to have eyes on it sooner. So I think in past years, we might have under budgeted for it because we have to build everything what's called a position. And so when we roll things from year to year, all the positions come over. And then I have to just kinda sort through to see which ones we don't need anymore. But in the prior counter software, it was never a position, so we didn't really have eyes on who was getting it. And so that's why you might see some people that have it, have had it for a few years, which is.
Right. Okay, that's all, only question.
Jane, do you have any questions?
I'm okay on this one. Hit everything that I was looking at, so that's great.
I, I feel, I just wanted to say, I, I think it's a really good budget. I think my main concerns were always like, what are we taking away for specifically for the, for the kids? And I just, and I wanted to just make sure that we had the right numbers from what we agreed upon in the CDAs, which I assume is right, so that, that was my only.
And I know that, I know it is over the higher budget of the four point six six, but is there an appetite, I guess, is there a number you want us to be below? Or we're thinking about the facilities and maintenance number we want us to include for that? Cause the goal is to make any changes after this meeting to come back in December, interviewed.
Is, is there a way to see it, like, I know it's granular, but a couple ways, like adding in everything that we wanna do maintenance-wise, like.
Like version one.
Like a version one and a version two, like, you know, kicking off this punch list, you know, what does that look like if we?
If we add in the.
With the driveway, without the driveway, like, does anybody else wanna see that?
Well.
I mean, we could probably just calculate it, right? Just add it.
Yeah, I mean, we could calculate it right asleep here and lie.
Yeah, I mean, cause this is the number that people come at us at the, so I wanna see what this does.
Well, I think that one of the prior budgets that we got had it.
Summed it in, right?
Right? This was.
No, it did not have the repairs and maintenance, and it did have other funds in there.
Cause it had the. I thought it might have.
It had the six point two one, had additional.
Facilities and maintenance in it, had an extra.
I added the hundred and twenty and, and it would be an eight point two percent.
Wow, thank you. That was very efficient.
So the one we had sent out earlier did have repair maintenance. But then what's different with this one is Suzie and I.
There were other reductions.
Right, I see that a lot of lines changed.
But I don't, if, if, I mean, clearly it wasn't that much work. It would be helpful, I think, to see it perhaps. Maybe.
And it's helpful to have a budget workshop. We can totally do that too.
I mean.
What is, what we're doing.
Yeah.
No, yeah, but were you talking about what the?
Do you, while we're like hammering this out, do you guys have any questions about the budget line items or anything that we maybe didn't hit?
Or any input?
The retirement provision line?
Yep, so that, so, um, at the, uh, I don't know if there's other things we need to talk about.
So that's the retirement line is based on current information that we have.
So at the end of.
Our personnel.
Yeah, so at the end of the tenure of someone's employee here, they, there's typically a retirement amount of money that they receive. So it's typically an amount of sick days that they, people, so when employees are eligible to retire, we have to budget.
Again, contract, it's in their contracts that they, they retire, that they get done.
This is the estimated out of, based on the contract. I know, I was, I asked the same question last week.
Yeah, I.
I know. It's hard when you're a small school, not just.
Well, and sometimes also we are predictive with regards to payment because we are making sure we're trying to get ahead of it, knowing that some folks might be eligible.
Yeah, and so then, oh, yeah, and so this budget is going to be for next school year, so next, pretty much a, a year, we'll finish a year and a half from now. And so people might have during altered life situations and to predict when someone's retiring in a year and a half from now would be difficult.
The general teaching supply line? I see we spent actually seventeen thousand eight hundred something twenty-four.
Yeah, that's a great question, Jim.
And now it's almost doubled for next, the next year's budget.
So if you, to put our, our ready materials, which is our half materials and our written wisdom where it actually belongs, which is that general supply line, because it's a consumable, there's a decrease in, I believe, printed materials because we just swapped where it belongs. We're trying to put, clearly, we're trying to put things in their rightful spot.
So it's an offset.
Yeah, and those, I mean, those free terms are not cheap, right? I ready is eighteen-five. Just dump, I mean, Jay and I were just talking today, paper's two thousand dollars, right? Just the paper that we, that's just paper. And W Mason's five thousand dollars. Teacher supplies that each teacher uses for their classroom, it's about four thousand total. So there is a heavy line. That's our KBS line in, that I control.
Happily take donations for paper. Read with paper. Not, I'm half joking. When people ask, they're like, how do you help? Well, this is all you can help.
Jenny, I did that math. That's helpful.
Of course you did the math. I love that.
Now, this is, James, that's giving me really complex. I didn't do the extrapolated over several years.
No, you did it actually. That's what I was asking for.
Uh, if we added forty thousand dollars, which would be, for example, the LED, that goes from four point six six percent increase to five point eight percent increase. If we added sixty-three thousand, I don't mind if you got that.
So it's sixty-three thousand, if we wanted to do, do like sixty-three thousand over three years.
Oh, well, the whole.
That's the one, that's one twenty, so that's the driveway.
So if you did sixty.
But how, we can't, we have to spend it in a year, so how, we can't.
You have to spend it.
Spend it, so we can't like pay half the driveway.
I mean, Rusty has piecemealed other schools, but to be honest, it's more expensive.
Right, yeah.
It doesn't really work that well, unless you raise it and then we put in, put it into the maintenance fund, planning to put it into the maintenance fund.
As far as things like building, like LED, is there a, say we budgeted twenty thousand extra and we, can you plan to use some money from the building maintenance fund to do projects? Or is not ideal to sort of plan to use the fund?
I mean, you can. I wouldn't suggest that, I mean, like at the high school, they're building it up to plan for the roof, but that's five acres of roof.
Yeah.
So you can't appropriate that in one year. But if you know of an expense, you can, and if it's a large expense, like the Turk at the high school, they kept putting money, they know they're gonna have to spend it. You could do something like this. And to contribute to a trust, and it doesn't have to be current fund balance, it can also be a raise and appropriate. So. Lots of ponder.
I did my business budget today too, since my brain hurts, sorry.
So one of the questions is, is do we take this, raise and appropriate, or do we put this into the budget? For the larger.
But just keep in mind, if you do a separate one article and it fails, there's a certain number, a certain time period that you can't do that. So if you wanted, but I guess if it would just be to the, the repair maintenance fund, it would be specific.
Yeah, what would be your recommendation?
Ideally, you would have an amount in the budget and have it consistent each year, like the co-op does. The co-op has five hundred thousand dollars for projects every year, and Rusty passes it around. That would be ideal. That way you're stabilizing the tax rate and doing things each year. But I understand there's a lot of need to.
I feel like we need to up the building maintenance fund. I thi- I feel like no matter what, based on everything we need to do, and there's probably way more that we need to do, that's not on here, like, to your point, it would be good to do some, a full facilities audit, to raise that maintenance fund allocation from ten thousand.
One hundred percent agree.
To a bigger number. Because that's such, I mean, it's, it's the fund that we have dipped into the most. At least in my tenure here, at, not on the school, but in just being here as a parent, it's the one that we dip into the most. I feel like we need a bigger cushion in that one and faster.
And maybe just spent fifty-four thousand for the roof. Right?
Yes.
You could do a combination of. You could do two one articles. You do one from fund balance and one for raise and appropriate.
Yeah, that might be a.
That might be a good way to do it.
Cause then we still have it raise and appropriate, but we also have the option of.
And they could both pass, like, it's acceptable.
Sure, they could both pass, they could both fail. Absolutely, right.
No, I agree. I think that's wise. And then I, I also think that we may wanna consider knowing what is coming up ahead, thinking about maintaining a higher than ten thousand dollars specifically for building fund, at least in the near future. The short-term future. But that's a couple of years from now, but.
Yeah, like, I mean, I would. So the last, I'm looking at what we retained, and we retained fifty-five, thirty, 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 and forty thousand every year. I feel like if we upped that, uh, building maintenance retained amount to like right now, it's up to ten thousand. I feel like it needs to be like at least twenty, if not.
I thought you were gonna say fifty.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say thirty, or forty, I don't know. I mean, I honestly.
That's from the fund balance you're talking about?
Yeah. And then.
Well, what?
And then keep the other ones at ten. So then it's an amount of a potentially sixty thousand goes to fund all of the trust.
If you have it available.
If we have it available, right, right. Which in the.
May not be available.
It's our way to predict.
It is. I'm just saying historically it has been, so we'd at least be fine. We would at least be able to fund the building maintenance, which is, I think, the most crucial at this point.
If it's available.
If it's available.
Ma is gonna keep saying.
That is a good point. I mean, if it is available, and that is a risk.
Oh, absolutely. No, and I, I think we should also do a raise and appropriate as well because we have, we have these known numbers, but I mean, to go forward with the, the standing one. Make that higher.
And we can also decide that next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should decide that next month. We should also take a look at what your goals were for each one of those funds. See where we're short in any of the other ones. And kind of make a final decision then.
I promise to be efficient with policies, just one way.
So for the December meeting, how would you like to see this number difference outside of the trust fund?
Negative, no.
Or would you like us to increase some of the operating budget for the facilities budget?
I, I think the facilities does need to go up. I don't think it needs to go up by the full one ninety, because I think that we can try and raise an appropriate for that, but I think we need to have some cushion just in case something happens with those classrooms that we don't know about, that we're not gonna know about next month, so having some, now that the question is, is what? So.
I feel like it needs to be.
How would be the fifty? So I guess it would be what's going to be on the fifty?
I feel like it needs to be that forty.
You mean adding another forty in there?
Five point eight percent.
Right, right. Only because.
Yeah.
Only because then, like, we're at least hitting one of the major projects that we have on this punch list and potentially more, you know.
We're also taking advantage of the rebates.
Right, we're taking advantage.
In that regard, we're reducing, potentially reducing our electricity and all this other stuff, so there's gains in there to follow on in a few years. So, yeah, I would say put the fifty in there. No, forty, additional forty.
Additional forty to the fifty, so it's a twelve ninety.
Plus the ten percent of the corporate employees, so it'd probably be around a hundred and.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so.
And then we can put in a raise and appropriate and a fund balance. A raise and.
And we can decide that.
We can decide that next month. No, 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 not now.
We'll have additional information.
Thank you. That's excellent. Did you guys follow all of that? You okay, questions?
Sorry, sorry. No, you're fine.
Do you have any idea what the rebate on the
I was trying to look up.
Dr. Andruski is super knowledgeable.
Like, two thousand dollars, like, two thousand dollars?
Um, I will
That's a good question.
What, what, you were asking about the rebates for LED, do you have more information on how much that would be?
I can get more information, for sure.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, I just know that there are rebates and they are time sensitive, so we need to plan for them for fiscal year twenty six, but I will give that for you.
And then just to recapitulate, or, the driveway repaving, if, it would be included as part of the large safety
Yes.
parking project, so then you wouldn't need
We wouldn't need that.
The expenditure.
That's why I was reluctant to like, put that in, because
So I know Molly asked if there's a number that you guys, or a percentage increase that you were hoping for, I think what she was referencing is that throughout SAU sixteen, our goal for the various buildings has been to have minimal increases, I think, and have it be around three percent ideally, um, so that, you know, again, that, that was the goal, I think one of the, one of the important pieces of information to consider here in Newfield, is that historically speaking, Suzie has been it's very hard to have the budget kind of be really low, and last year was really the first time in her tenure that our budget had been, you know, higher than the three percent, is my, is my understanding. Um, so I do think that when we consider, you know, brought to share this four point six six right now, or the, was, was it five point eight?
Five point eight, well, and that, that's a talking point, because four point six to five point eight, like, we can talk to that
Yes.
increase that.
I just wanted to clarify for the purpose of this discussion, I, I'm hearing that you, you folks aren't giving us a percentage that you would like to be under, or, you know, you are, as long as it's justifiable.
Let's say under six.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just saying, if, if we seem quasi comfortable with five point eight.
I mean, I don't ha- I don't have a number in mind, I, I just want it to make it, make sense, and clearly there's some big ticket items that we've been putting off that we need to address, I mean, in, whether it's in warrant articles or in the budget, and so, like you said, Suzie has done a good job of keeping our, our, um, budget low, and it just is what it is in some cases.
And you're not alone in the high budgets, because, I mean, in a lot of the other districts, it's related to special education, and since here, it's a little bit of special, but also facilities, so.
Yeah.
I would describe it as high budget.
I mean, you have a
Higher than three.
When you have an old building, like, things are gonna, the, it's, this is the reality of this buil- building is an older building, and, you know, it's time we take care of it.
It's to be expected, it's out of our control, really, and but, ha, ha, at, in this moment, and we, we are taking steps to be more proactive by hiring somebody, you know, this ten percent to come in and help oversee facilities, so that we're not in this predicament in the future, that we are thinking further out.
This really helps, seeing like, what's coming, is, you know, making steps now to because maybe the light bulbs, hopefully some of the savings, we can throw towards the paving, I don't know.
Okay, well, thank you, that's helpful clarification.
May I ask you one more question?
Sure.
The, the fiscal year actuals, the fiscal year twenty four budget, so there's a surplus of twenty five thousand dollars, the difference between the two? Between what was budgeted and what was actually expended?
Yes.
So, is that, that twenty five thousand dollars, is that going to fund the pots and the ward, articles or not, or is that a separate?
Um, so that's a big question, so, so at the end of the day, we have an unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, so our fiscal year ended June thirty, and your unassigned fund balance is a combination of two things, it's expenses less than planned for all your budget line items together, and revenue more than planned. And so then what happens is first it goes under warrant articles, and we typically have between thirty and fifty thousand dollars warrant articles, so the first amount would go towards that. Then, what's left over after that is a credit to your tax rate. So we don't give a check to the town, we just say, okay, for the next year's budget, we then have to raise that much less.
So, were all the warrant articles funded last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a revenue surplus?
Yes, so last year, we, we finished with fifty nine thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars. The first forty thousand went back into warrant articles.
Okay.
And then the nineteen thousand one seventy three was a credit on your taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that amount, the ending fund balance varies from year to year, but the last couple of years, it's been pretty close.
Right, I mean, I'm just thinking, if you're looking to have, um, money fund your maintenance, it's not there's not like fifty thousand dollars there.
Yeah, we build a needs-based budget every year, now you will see, well, I didn't want to add that, but during the, the COVID years, we had some high balances, and it's because we didn't have a student, we didn't have the like, some of the things, um, something like that. So, we are returning to normal, um, so, you're right, we won't have a sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Right, and we, and when we write the warrant articles, we write them in order of needs, so that, like
Yeah, the first one gets funded first.
Right, exactly, so.
Yeah, so like, you, like each year we budget for snowplowing, and if this continues, then we'll have
I know, right? Can we just pay with the, with the snowplowing budget? Seriously, what is our snowplowing budget?
So did anyone else have any other questions on the current year funding schedule, we didn't really go into that depth, um, we did relieve the asset related to the roof, but also we built other expenditures specifically, student-needed expenditures that we didn't come to be covered.
Is there anything in here that you wanted to highlight to us before I?
Not really.
There's only, it's only, oh, it's only three pages, nevermind, I thought it was gonna be like twelve, alright.
No, this is, so that, it does have that first page where we had a change from the prior month.
Yep.
So, it's just encumbers building for student need, um, some of the technology that we had, we had encumbered when the first financial was run, offset by the, the trust reimbursement. And really the big factors.
Site services?
So that would be encumbered through the whole year.
The whole year, right? I know I ask you that every time, I'm sorry.
I was about to ask, and I was like, I learned that one.
I know, I ask every time, because it's a big number, so, it's just, I feel like, I'm like, if I don't ask, I don't know.
That encumber just wasn't in there before we ran this.
Got it, okay.
You did it so early in the month.
Yeah, I thought so, so early in the year.
Okay.
Okay, so, any of you have anything else on numbers, now that my brain is completely fried?
Okay.
And if anyone wants any extra budget talks, you can come and join me down.
Oh, so fun.
Hang out with Molly.
I'm gonna bring you some popcorn, and we'll hang out and talk budgets, sweet.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Budget Advisory Committee.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll see you next month, right?
The first one's saved in December.
Four. Yeah, let's
Yeah.
The, the first one's, yeah, December.
Yeah, it's the fourth, December fourth.
Suzie spoke to, the contents of her report is revised soon, speaking to the Wolfie Series Systems of Support Framework, the grant award, so because we want to go to, continue down, number eight, finish eight before we go up to six committees.
Yeah, let's talk about, yeah, because, uh, staff and student handbook and the lunch prices.
The staff and student handbooks, um, are for, you know, I, I included them in the packet, and they, they've clearly been handed out, you know, and it's November, um, and so it's more for for us to document that you folks have had the opportunity to review them.
Oh, okay.
And for us to notify you as well, that Suzie has a current community ally to support.
So with our family handbook, it's been four years that we, since we've really looked at it, and so we put together a very wide range of faculty members, um, one that's a parent and a faculty member, that's an interventionist, a unified arts person, um, a kindergarten teacher, um, one of our special education teachers, and then a paraprofessional, and what they're doing is they've laid out all of the handbooks from the six other elementary schools in the SAU, and they're going section by section through our handbook, and making sure that it's current with the current practices, but also that it aligns, because one of our big roles in in SAU sixteen is that, um, across the board, as much as possible, we align our, um, models and our protocols, and so, that team monthly needs and reviews all that. So by the end of this year, that handbook will be finished and completed.
Awesome, I didn't know there's some highlighting in the one of them, is that?
In the document?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That Suzie highlighted?
This one is the staff one.
Okay.
I just didn't know if it was intentional, or, okay, alright, cool.
Okay, so then lunch prices. We would like to increase the lunch prices, um, right now they're at three fifty, and I know the board increased the prices, um, not last school year, but the school year prior. Um, they are relatively comparable to the other lunch prices in our other elementary schools in SAU sixteen, so it's really going down in that data. Um, and, you know, we are not part of the federal lunch program. So, it will also help to increase our lunch prices in terms of our overall annual leads. And I don't know, Molly, or, Suzie had anything to add, and then after this, Molly can answer.
Assuming you said yes, then we, uh, decrease the loss in the projected budget for next year. So because we always have food service management line, that's where the the operating budget has to cover is the loss in the food service fund, and that's not unique, a small school, that's not a program. So as you see in the FY twenty six budget that we were just talking about, the food service management line in Fund eleven decreased, assuming that we move forward with this decision.
I figured that, that's what I was guessing.
And what was the proposed increase?
Four dollars.
Yeah.
Three fifty to four dollars.
So I see, is it, are we looking at mine the last page? From
In the Fund eleven, and it's called Food Service Management.
Yep, which will lie, uh, sixty nine is the proposed for next year versus this year, which is sixty six and
No, that's the Food Service Fund, so
Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, so in Fund eleven, so on page
He says line I'm right.
Page, page, Food Service Management, right above where it says General Fund eleven.
What page?
Uh, so on page eight, you see that space in the page, go up just three lines, and it has a decrease of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I got you.
So as you see, actually, the food service loss was thirty thousand, uh, thirty thousand and fifty two dollars and one cent. This year's budget is on par with that, because that's what the loss was, um, but we're reducing the projected loss to twenty thousand, assuming that you increase the lunch prices to mitigate that loss.
Okay, don't worry, I'm building that fund. We're moving ahead.
Can we keep this snap, listen? Yeah. Do we need a motion, or we just say, we, we think that's a good idea?
Yes, motion.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, increase the school lunch prices for next academic year?
For now, what are we, what are you requesting?
Sorry, I should have clarified that.
Now.
I, I would, I'm, yeah, I would, I would like to make a change in January, so that
January, yeah.
Something I can push out and let people give, give two months' worth of notice.
And that's how we handled it last time as well, but I, I recall is that it was thoughtful, we gave people that advanced
Correct.
time to process it.
I'll make a motion, um, to increase the school lunch prices to four dollars, uh, in January of this year, the
January of twenty five.
January of twenty twenty five. Anybody second?
I'll second this, I'm talking over, sorry.
Oh, it's favor.
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Here's all my money. Okay, so, um, alright, so committees, anything else from Molly?
Thank you, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
It's right in the top.
Thank you, Molly. Um, okay, so, yeah.
Can you put your mind real quick, and then I can hit bodies at the end?
Yeah, do mine at the end.
Is that okay?
I'm, I'm
I'll be quick, because I just have the two.
Oh, committee, oh, I'm sorry, I just went strategic policy, because it's the biggest section.
Right?
No, don't go first.
You, strategic planning, yes, go.
Okay.
Sorry.
Strategic planning.
I skipped right over it.
Nope, you are good, um, I'll do strategic planning and safety and security, because I'm just gonna talk.
Go.
Uh, strategic planning, we met, um, in November, we went through the surveys that are going to be sent out to the town, um, and we are going into small groups, two groups, to be able to gather feedback. We're gonna meet again on the twenty first of this month to finalize those surveys, they're going to go out in January, um, I was asked to, um, for Newfields to figure out a way to get them out to the community, there will be a blurb in the library newsletter about it. I had, Esther, kind of give me some coffee for that, and she did, so I sent that over to the library, um, you know, the friends to be able to include that in their newsletter, that's gonna go out, I believe, early December, at the latest, um, telling people to kind of be ready to see, see that, and then after that, we'll kind of, um, send it out with Sue and Facebook and all the other things, um, so that's, that one.
And you folks can go free to stay or depart.
Yeah, you don't have to listen.
Yeah, you don't have to listen to this, oh, I'm sorry.
Come and go, actually, please.
We'll watch it later.
Yeah, fine.
If you're ever gonna get a copy of the budget, could you email me one, or is there one right there?
Yes, right here.
Okay. Sure. I can scrutinize that, because I woke myself to sleep.
And if you'd like it
You'd like some policies, that's really good reading material.
If you'd like it, send electronically, let me know as well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, so the survey is gonna be out, uh, at the end of December, all of January, and then we're gonna get the results, we'll review those results, and we're gonna do the summit in, uh, March with the facilitators, and I'll communicate that out with, you know, the general public, talk to Sue, get that out there, get as many people from Newfields as possible to respond to them. The people that are going to be participating in the survey are students, parents, um, employees, as well as any community members, so there's three different surveys. Any questions on that one? And then, for the safety and security meeting, that was on October seventeenth, I'm gonna run through everything quickly, let me know if you have any questions, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer them, but I'll do whatever I can. So, um, Rick Kane moderated it, Esther was at a conference, um, so it went really quickly. Kudos to Rich for like, getting through that meeting in record time, it actually ended early. Um, they did a number of tabletop exercises, um, and during those tabletop exercises, you can kind of choose, the staff can choose, this is with staff, can choose what type of training they want. Uh, most choose active shooter training, they, as they do that, they iron out all the issues in the building and what could happen, um, and they found a number of different things that they can identify and fix during those. Um, the next thing we talked about was safety grants, uh, there are no new grants available by the state, um, the previous grants have been awarded for, uh, physical improvements in the schools, uh, so for example, you know, gates per vehicle traffic flow, um, there was a hundred thousand dollars for the tech campus for cameras, it was granted and used, things along those lines, so if we wanted to potentially as we think about the safety and security project, that could be something that we might think about, but that's for next year. Um, we also had a memorandum of understanding, an MOU with PEA. This is, PEA is going to be the emergency evacuation reunification location, this is a brand new, uh, system, there was a recommendation to not have it be a SAU school or SAU site.
Sorry, I, I, I wanna interrupt you, because it's, only because I, are we allowed to share?
This is public information.
Okay.
That, I just wanted to ask, because it is a public information, it is on our website, where the unification place is, it has to be, our parents need to be able to find where their kids are if something happens.
And then I think some of the specifics within the actual planning is what you referred to, Julie, and how we
How that happens, no.
Incorporated.
Got it, okay. Just, I just wanted to make, sorry.
You are good.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, it's going to be, if anything happens at any of the schools So, um, it's going to be, if anything happens at any of the schools, it's gonna be the PEA gymnasium. And an email will be sent or some type of communication that is, will be determined at the time, will be sent to parents to fit, to give them the directions to go to the love gym. Just a point of note, the emergency evacuation location for something that's happening in our school is different from the Seabrook Station evacuation location. So those are two different, that's in Manchester. That's a completely different process. Both are available on the N E S website, under school information. I double checked. We did a first school safety audit. Uh, they need to be done every, every three years. They're required by Homeland Security. We're done, we're good. Emergency operations plan is also complete by every school. They are reviewed by our principal every year. And we are all set for any communication plan if anything happens. The emergency drill that was taking place at Newfields over the summer went great. Um, it gave an opportunity for all of our first responders, different units to come together and kind of do a lot of scenario testing, figure things out. They found some really great identification points for them to work on, and they're working on them. We had a nine one one update. It required that all the phones in the building be checked to show they're showing nine one one and the correct location in the building. Rich is, this isn't, Newfields is fine. This is, the biggest problem is going to be like the high school and the middle school where there's if you're picking up a phone in the high school and middle school, you have to be able to know what location it is. Nine one one needs to figure that out. So Newfields is good on that. Uh, we looked at the iodine supply. Our supply expired in November. Uh, Rich has ordered a new supply and all the schools have been given their alimony already, and we went over this earlier. There will be a policy update, so look for this. Um, J C I D student discipline, there's typically an MOU with local law enforcement. We don't have one. So I talked to Chief Young about this during the meeting. Newfields does not have one. We will need to get this in place. It is not like emergent, but it's something that will probably come up for you. They're doing some cybersecurity tabletop exercises to prepare for any ransomware or hacking or virus incidences. There's gonna be a large update on that next meeting. They met with the fire marshal and maintenance personnel from each school, and the goal was to formulate a vision of what they want to do in various emergency situations, like shapes for classrooms, et cetera. Um, more details on that as necessary. Some of the questions that came up were around I T and how do you deal with emergencies with like a million people heading onto the like school websites if something happens? So Rich is gonna ensure I Ts in the future meetings to answer any of those questions. And eventually there will be some unification practices, but that's not right now, that's later. That's it. Any questions?
No, that was good.
Did I miss anything? You all said, because you were there too, right?
Yes, I was there.
And so was Suzie there.
Comprehensive, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I had like PTSD from like, are we sharing too much?
No, 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 no.
I make sure we don't.
General updates.
Yeah. This is Yeah, because I was on that committee, so I was like trying to remember. I was like, oh.
General versus brand new for that.
Yeah, this is, these are high level.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll share.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Do you have one, Jenny, in person?
I do have one, a super value, superintendent evaluation committee. Um, did you get an?
Yes, I have emailed you.
Yes, so sure, sure.
Assist.
Sure, yeah. So I, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but my question to Alan was, in light of Esther retiring and Chris taking over, what is, uh, what changes are we making, if any, to the process of the super evaluation committee and evaluation stuff?
Yes, so the response to that question is that this, you know, we're required by law, the board is required by law to evaluate the superintendent annually regardless of whether they are retiring immediately or not, so that will continue. What's up for further discussion within the committee will be what exactly that three hundred and sixty degree evaluation entails based on Esther's retirement news.
Cool, alright. So stay tuned. I, I don't have any, I don't know when our next meeting is. I haven't seen, gotten any, anything on that yet, so. Okay, Bobby, you're it.
Okay, so this is long, I will say that. Um, I also recognize that Suzie is still here, as typically are you.
We're gonna go into non-public.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll be as efficient as I can.
Sorry.
I'll also put the caveat that I wasn't at this meeting, I had a conflict, but I met with Heather yesterday.
Okay.
And we had a whole hour and we went through each and every one of them. I had my own individual, um, meeting with her.
Thank you for that. Just real quick, sorry for the interruption, but Suzie doesn't necessarily have to stay for non-public.
Oh, okay. That's, I guess, I guess a student, she had to.
No.
Okay.
So she can, if you
Would you like to? Is, well, some of this in
The policies.
Do you have any questions?
It might be, yeah, especially like when we talk about like staff.
Alright, we'll move through that.
Okay, yes.
So I recommend that we go through these in a different order than what's on, if that's okay?
Perfect.
I'm gonna go through some of the simpler ones first. Um, so J L D B B, it's a suicide prevention response. Um, and by simple, I mean simplest changes. Um, so this is a policy that we've had and we reviewed not so long ago, but there was a change in the, um, lifeline information. And so they updated it with the nine eight eight number, and it also indicated, uh, based on state law to include on the I D cards, the national lines for ID source number. Now, we do not have currently I D cards, I believe, for kids. And so, um, Heather did say that we as a board could consider removing that paragraph altogether, uh, E, if we wanted to. Her recommendation was to keep it in the event that we do ever have, um, a system where we have I D cards because the law does say that, um, those two numbers seem to be on there. And so that's the only change to this policy. So I think it's probably reasonable just to keep it as it's for the rest of the changes.
Yeah, would that change? Would that make us, would that require us to have I D cards?
Yes, because this is our current policy, actually. E says that we have to, excuse me. E indicates if we had cards, what would be on them. It doesn't say that we have to have.
All new or replacement. We don't have them.
So that's the only change. So in that regard, I would just say, if you have any questions, otherwise we can
The only thing I have on this one, I'm sorry, Jenny, if you have anything, was that when I looked this up on our own site, it was Kensington's policy and not ours.
So it should be replaced.
So it should be replaced, but I also couldn't reference the prior policy, so, um.
Well, this, this is except for the red lines.
Um, I noticed it's kind of not always, because it doesn't, it, we tend to make weird changes because we're such a small school. And I found a couple of inconsistencies with these other ones, um, because they're not you'll notice that it doesn't say, it's, it's, it's the policy itself in its original written form, so not always. I'm not worried about it. I have no problems with this policy for this one, but that's why I always double check it with what's on the website. But we do need to update this with our policy and not Kensington's.
One thing that Heather and I did discuss was that it was not clear, and it's inconsistent how any updates at the individual local boards get communicated to then be updated on the website, to your point.
Okay.
And so, um, she agreed, and the recommendation would be that we're going to have a consistent, uh, role in doing that way and doing that for each of the boards. She was saying, in our case, Ellen has been very helpful and instrumental communicating that to Heather. And so I'll make sure that I double back as well, but, um, she wants, and I think it's a good idea to have each board have the same process so that as a policy member, we understand what our role is in that regard, sort of moving back.
Cool, okay.
Um, so that's that. Um, the other one that is relative
So do we wanna?
You wanna do one at a time? Thanks.
Why don't we do them?
No, but so are, does anybody have, so no, no changes?
I had no changes.
Okay. I'm just making a note for when I go through them.
Um, the next one that is relatively straightforward, hopefully, um, is, uh, E B C H, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan. The background that I got was that, um, this is, um, I believe a new policy altogether. And the Department of Ed did some audits recently, and there were some updated regs. And it was a require, and is a requirement that we have as a school board or as a, as a district, a chemical and hygiene plan. And then, um, subsequently, um, too, we have a policy that states that we will have a plan. We're now in the current stages of meeting with facilities and Chris and Dr. Stacey to work on the actual plan itself. This policy is almost the exact verbatim template from the School Board Association that aligns with the law. So any recommended, recommended changes would be something that we may want quirkily for our, um, school board, but I don't have any recommendations for changes.
I had a question. Hang on, let me find my question.
Ellen, you were at this meeting, right?
Yes, I was.
Because I was not, so I may not have any questions, but
No, that's okay. I, I just wanna make sure that I wrote down a question, I need to one of those things.
While you're looking for that, actually, I have a little note here, potential question. So I was trying to, um, so under C, uh, the question
That's exactly.
Yeah, okay. Uh, although I can't find C, but
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, yeah, so under C, the answer is yes, we can bring Lysol wipes.
That's what I was gonna ask.
So
So that was, that was a question.
Um, and I guess the goal is to incorporate that into the actual plan itself, to rectify that fact of life.
Alright.
Good though.
So there was two things. One, first paragraph, and this is gonna be nitty gritty. District records, records shall include bore, which should be bored. So there's a typo there.
Right there.
Oh, wait. No, isn't that wait, oh, wait, E B C H, right?
E B C H.
Keep that because that's a good type of thing.
This is a brand new policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why did I do this? Sorry, my mess.
It's okay, it was right before E H. I took a minute to find it too.
Thank you.
Because I was trying to see
Well, I went out of order, I'm sorry, but I just felt like the first couple was so voluminous.
Yeah.
I wanted to go through this trip before we went.
No, no, you're fine, I just have to find. There was, the question that I'd wrote down on my notes was in reference to volunteers. So I think that, I think the policy references volunteers somewhere. And I wanted to know
Yeah, but see, no employer designated volunteer may bring any cleaning products or pesticides.
Right, so how does, what is the, there is no definition of volunteer. Is a volunteer somebody who walks into the school? Is it, um, after school programs? Like volunteer is so wide that I kind of would like to be able to know what that encompasses, because that is very vague.
I hear you. I've not been at the meeting, but reading the policy, I do like that the word designated is in there because it specifies that, um
They're designated to bring in cleaning products.
That question did not come up at the meeting. I think it's something that could be detailed further out in the plan versus the policy.
Okay, cool.
As a solution.
Okay.
I'll make a recommendation.
That would be great. And then, so where we're talking about number four on the first page, provision to minimize use of toxic chemicals for pest control, blah, 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 blah. What about the garden out front? If somebody from the garden clubs brings pesticides in, things along those lines, is this something that we have to notify them of?
So I'm just gonna stop, so not stop you, but just to clarify again.
Perfect.
The, prior to the enumeration of all the numbers
Yep.
It says additions to the plan shall address bada bing bada boom. And so the, this, the one, two, three, four, what's in them isn't
Policy, it's plan.
So the question that you have is gonna be about the development of the plan.
Correct.
And, and this policy is not the plan itself. This is
Great, okay.
A policy just saying that we will develop a plan.
Okay.
That is apparently a law that recently.
So we'll need, who is developing the plan?
So Chris and the, um
Rested lister?
Facilities and rested lister are working on it.
Okay. We will review the plan? We will see the plan?
That's, I don't know if we will see the plan. Is that something?
I don't believe so. I believe that
We can ask for the plan, I imagine.
Right, I don't think it would be an automatic as a next step with regards to the policy. Yeah, if you ask to see it.
Okay.
Okay, good. Anything else on this one?
Nothing that I have.
Okay.
Um, the other relatively straightforward one, or I'll comment on K E D is being proposed to be withdrawn because it will be duplicative based on some of the other changes of the first couple. So just, uh, that's all I'm gonna say about that, and then I'll come back to it when we talk about the first couple.
Right, so we
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then the only other one that is, um, not related to some of the Title IX changes, which again, we're so lucky to have Ellen here who can speak to that when it comes to it.
Thank God.
Uh, is E H. And so E H has to do with public access to the school district records. And Heather was saying this is the first time that we've revised this particular policy since two thousand and fifteen. And if you look at it, it actually changed, we changed the title of it because, um, so all the red that's, or that's stricken out, um, we cut out because there were, um, one through four was the old policy and there's current RSA. And basically what, um, Heather was saying is sort of the right to know law. Um, and this particular policy shows and outlines how the public can, um, gain access to certain things. Exactly.
Oh, sorry.
And what do we have here? Most of the detail, uh, it's just a, a listing of all of these specific, um, RSA requirements. Were there any questions on certain things? I know she, Heather and I went through some
Just bore.
Details, but, okay, what, what page is that?
One, it's in the first paragraph.
First, oh, okay, first paragraph.
And then I don't know if it's a really gonna be an issue for N E S, but you never know, like where it says on page two, record or section four, record availability, records will be reviewed in their entirety by either the superintendent or designee before they're released. Depending upon how large like a request could be, that might be I don't think that we can change that because it's probably law related, but that seems it could be onerous depending upon the largesse of the request.
Yeah.
However, that's not, that's just something I noticed versus anything else, but I don't have anything.
We have had designees, the superintendent designate, designate, excuse me, other staff to assist with their records requests, and then the superintendent can then, or designate can then consult with the designate, you know what I'm saying?
So could a designate be a law firm?
Yes.
Brilliant, okay, done.
Good question.
Jenny, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. That's good to go. Uh, with the bore change, okay. And then the other ones, and again, I'm gonna, um
We're starting at the beginning this time.
Um, well, I'm gonna first sort of contextualize them all, and then Ellen, I want you, if you can help sort of fill in any blanks. I'm also happy to pass it over to you if you want, because I know this is your, your world.
Your jam.
Absolutely. Why don't you give your overview of that some more? Yeah.
So, um, what Heather was sharing with me was that, um, their Title IX federal regulation was revised this past year. And so as a result, several of the, uh, policies as relates to Title IX need to be updated as a result. Also, there were some, there was a desire to, uh, include, um, not only the, um, the different things that are protected under each of these, these, um, policies as far as, um, discrimination, et cetera, but also hat with the grievance process. And in certain, um, policies, they were in one, and others they were not. So the idea was to make them consistent. And so, um, some of them in particular, the, what's the really big one here?
A C A C.
A C A C, yeah.
Twenty eight pager.
So she said, much of the text is familiar, but it was very much reformatted, um, and sort of moved about in order to make sure that all of the requirements that were associated with Title IX
Yes, under A C A C, there are not substantive changes to the procedure. Yes, under A C A C, there are not substantive changes to the procedures for the. Like comparatively speaking, from this version of A C A C to our previous version of A C A C. The layout is relatively similar. And the reason, I think I can speak to this just really quickly.
Please.
Like is that the reason why we are incorporating more grievance procedures, and I think. You know, this is a new policy, A C A, with regards to the specific discrimination and grievance procedure. Is that really is helpful for our building level administrators when they're, you know, putting these policies in effect. To really have it all laid out in terms of what the expectations are for how to adhere to the regulations.
Perfect. So um I can go, so we have, so that was the impetus for changing, I think, all of these. And so if you go back to A C, that is um as I understand it, not sex, not anti- anti-discrimination. Not related to Title IX.
Yes.
But the idea was to make sure that this mapped um sort of the the layout of of the others as well. And there were some changes as well. We wanted to also have consistent definitions between um all the different non-discrimination policies. And so there were some additional uh changes in there. Um and in particular, I think one of the callouts had to do with um adding additional. Categories uh protected status that are again are based on law in one section one, you know, number one. But again, all of that, as far as I could tell, is um required by law, including the. Inclusion of the addresses and phone numbers that I asked that question, like do we have to have them in there? And that is a requirement. The only thing that we, that came up that we as a Newfield's board. May consider removing is section three. That has to do with the USDA piece, because we are not a. Um federal.
Right, we're not a U S.
So that's on, it's, I'm trying to find the section. It's under section I.
Page five.
Um number three. So it might make sense for us to remove that whole section um if we wanted to. That was the only. Thing that is not sort of required by law to be in this policy. Ellen, was there anything about A C?
No, that was very thorough. There was nothing else that was raised at the committee meeting with regards to this. Um Arlen Paletta was there as well, our director, our chief equity officer, so she was able to speak to the specific changes in the law. That have then resulted in changes, oh resulted in changes in the policy.
Uh do we feel strongly about removing the the USDA section?
I think it's not applicable to us, so I don't see that. It's necessary, so I would probably take it out, but I hope.
Would there ever be a reason that we would need it?
I don't think that we are ever gonna be eligible for that program unless we get really good, like like CMS type of. When do we?
When, yeah, when is the eligibility for that? Like what is, what is the eligibility for that?
I don't, I don't have a specific answer to that, do you? Like it's time, I can guess get that for you for the next meeting.
I do remember being eligible for the scoreage program is. It's not like you automatically become, you have to then say, I want to opt into it, right?
Right.
Because there's certain requirements.
I know, I'm just.
Yes, and then you have to u- update your facilities to be in compliance with the expectations for.
So it's like a.
This is top, this is more complicated than just applying. This is the the requirements in some of the roadblocks. That we, or that the board made decisions on is um the square footage of the kitchen. The storage of the kitchen, having a secondary person, the amount physically that would be. Become part of the burden of being.
This would be a whole new addition for us.
I guess I'm asking, cause there's things happening in the town that change the school majorly in the future, so. Do we just take this out now and address it ten years from now?
Um.
That was my question.
That's a good question. Um what other schools other than CMS and E H S are part of the scoreage program?
All of them, all the elements.
All of them, except for us.
We're the only ones.
But the only ones not, that was my thought.
It doesn't do any harm to leave it in.
Right, yeah, I mean.
The only reason why I bring it up is because last year, there was a policy that specifically referenced USDA things and we.
That's because we, yes, because we weren't allowed, it said we weren't allowed to bring food in to the building and because we got, that's why.
Yeah, so I think leaving in is fine. It doesn't, it doesn't cover us in any way. I just wanted to identify that.
No, I'm just thinking the future, it would have to be changed again and like potentially, potentially, I have no idea. I'm just, you know.
Okay, so.
I think that was good.
Did you have any changes or thoughts?
No, I didn't have any changes.
Um A C A was brand new, and it was a policy outlining the grievance procedure, and it allows it state and federal regulations, so.
The only question I had on this one was, does this conflict or does it matter? Does it conflict or would it have relevance to the teachers' contracts or the parents' contracts with this conflict at all? Cause we do have grievance procedures in that as well. Correct?
Yes, we do. I don't, uh Heather is very thorough.
Yeah, I was.
She really is, and she, I believe that she would have noticed and pointed it out. And if there wasn't any conflict here with regards to that. I think it, we are often charged with having to. Have side by side policy analysis from multiple policies as we're moving through various procedures.
Okay.
So would, so I'm assuming then to to your point, Jane, uh Jane, is that the C B A.
Should not, cannot be in conflict with the M O N.
Right. Right. Okay, so they, these would both be looked at at the same time, is that what you're saying?
Which is going to take precedent.
Right.
The C B A is our first go to in regards to when we are moving through and reviewing procedures.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't see anything glaring that I would have remembered from the, when we went through it.
Because that is contextual, as you know, versus.
Right.
Policy based.
Right.
Uh the only thing I had a quick question on is in consequences and remedies, so we're.
Section nine.
Second to last page, right? It references patrons, contractors, visitors, or others who violate this policy may be prohibited from district property. One of the things that I think about when I look at this is the after school programs. And um N Y A A, things like that, things that take place on school property. That we may not know, that may not know about this policy or might not be released by a staff member. Would that be in conflict with this, or how is that going to be communicated to? Non-staff members that might be in the building.
Um I would imagine that a non-staff members are in the building or using the facility, that they are. Well, they certainly have access to these policies, they're on the website.
They might have, not, yes. They have access, but they might not know consequences of, might not know reporting. Reporting pieces to and for it, like they might not know the procedure that's associated with it, which is just kind of important. I think of like, girls on the run. Girls on the run is that we don't, like I might because I'm on the board, but if anybody else, they're not gonna go, oh, let me, let me look up all the policies on the. The website to be able to make sure that I'm gonna be in compliance with them. Do we have an after school program or anybody else in the building kind of like? If this is gonna, let me put it this way. How is this enforceable?
Good question to ask.
Go ahead. I just wonder if you wanna relook at our facilities.
Useless.
Use and petition, put a box at the bottom. I've read policies, whether or not they choose to.
Right, or, you know, link to, please review these policies. You know, tell me that you have seen them or at least know that they're available, and this is what. At least some people that should be able to, cause I'd love that this is here. I wanna make sure that we're really protecting the kids through it, and that means, you know.
Informing our.
Informing anybody who's gonna be in this building, that are gonna be, right.
Does anyone like that suggestion?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion with regards to like the procedure that then accompanies policy for implementation.
Right.
Cause nobody should be using this building without using that form.
Yeah, and they don't.
Right, I'm saying, but that's a nice, efficient way to.
Yeah, they do, but it's also nice to know when you're using that form, right?
Yeah.
That you're like, oh, wait, I need to go here to look at this and make sure that I, so you're covered, we're covered, they're covered. The kids are covered.
Yes, that's a very obvious suggestion.
Okay, that's the only thing I had on this one, and that doesn't have anything to do with policy, so it just has everything to do with their own internal processes.
Implementation of it.
That was in C A. A C A C was the next one, and that was the Title IX that we were talking about. Um and. Uh there is a page in there that is not a policy, but it's like a perimeter, you know, if you wanna sort of see the side by side. Did you make that, Ellen?
Uh no, I did not. The the um legal folks did, but I can give you another overview briefly of the changes. So really, Title IX regulations changed significantly in twenty twenty under the previous federal administration. And here in twenty twenty four, the current federal administration made additional changes. And a part of that, part of those changes that occurred in twenty twenty, I would say the biggest part of those changes in twenty twenty. Were that they were really giving equitable measures to both parties, and by both parties, I mean the complainant. So the person on the receiving end of any sexualized behavior or sex based discrimination. Um as well as the respondent, a person who, a student who, or staff member, because this is applicable to students and staff who is said to have engaged in the behavior.
Okay.
So it really is about supporting all parties in an equitable manner. And some of the changes from twenty twenty four, from between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four. Are around um more efficient timelines for how to resolve a formal complaint of sexual harassment. Um under, in twenty twenty, the previous policy was about ninety to one hundred and ten days to move through our whole grievance process. And those timelines were non-negotiable, and were part of the federal regulations, all two thousand pages of federal regulations. And now it's more of a forty five to sixty day timeframe, which makes it so that really, I think, another theme of these changes for twenty twenty four. Is that um it's more accessible for someone to file a formal complaint. Um because they have also brought in the definition of what constitutes sex- sexual harassment, sex based discrimination. Um and they have made it so that it's ideally, um you know, more accessible. And it won't be as difficult to substantiate whether sexual harassment has occurred.
Okay.
Thank you.
I went through this one with a fine tooth comb.
Yeah, the only thing I have on it was the same as before, making sure that, cause this references volunteers and visitors.
Okay.
Um and then activity, activities at the school, things along those lines, so. When we're looking at, again, an activity at the school and volunteers and visitors, I wanna make sure that. Those people are aware of this, so that it is. Adhere to, if at all possible, so I think that is the same thing that I just said, like this one, this one will be in that list too.
My understanding though, that this policy should basically be the same, uh this is the law.
This is the law.
Can you, can you, can you explain this a little bit more?
Quid pro quo. Yeah, so that's one of the definitions of sex based discrimination. It really comes down to three components of what could constitute sex based discrimination. And one of the components of that definition is quid pro quo, which is really, you know, if you do this. Sex based type of activity for me, then I will give you something else in return. So it's promising a benefit or a promotion or something in exchange for some type of. Sexual favor or sexual activity.
How does this? How does this policy, um I guess in general? Um I'm trying to figure out words, I'm sorry, um.
You're passed.
Address. Staff. Employees who may be married. Within the district.
Oh, well, I, what's, what's implied here in quid pro quo is that it's not consensual.
Okay.
So it addresses it that way. The other way that I think we are, we are effectively addressing it, just for any folks who might be married and might be engaged in some type of. Sexualized activity at school, is that um that could be misconstrued, or that someone else could, could, could make someone else feel uncomfortable.
Yeah.
I think that's what you might be getting at.
Yeah.
So that's been addressed effectively by um this year. I went myself, building to building, to train all staff, including facilities. And um food services. And that will continue going forward. So we laid a solid foundation. Everyone here was really receptive and it was a very helpful training. And then starting next year, we can have it be more engaging in more scenario ways. People were really, really grateful. Because prior to this year, we had staff do the primax training, which was, it was antiquated. And people were watching the videos, so it's not the same as being in a room and seeing humans.
Thanks for doing that.
That's awesome that you can.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Yeah, um the only thing that I have is a tiny change is under training requirements. Under superintendent, I think, needs to be capitalized. And that's just silly stuff, so.
So that's A C A C. Uh A C E just uh is an update identifying where to find the grievance procedure. And it basically references other policies that have that outlined. And the idea was that. Um it was felt it was important for it to be crystal clear how, just like earlier, we talked about grievances. How how one can file a grievance, reference um same policy.
This is A, we're on A C E, right?
That was A C E.
Yeah, I think I can also add a little detail to this, is that really quickly is that. Do you folks rec- recall that we've always had a notice of rights and policies that we go home? And it's on our website, but we didn't have a pers- we didn't have an actual policy. With regard, it was a notice, and it incorporated the grievance procedure, but it's going to be extremely helpful to have a policy to accompany that.
Oh, okay. Um this is actually on, let me see the site, as a policy that we revised in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, but not with the red.
Not with the red.
Yeah, that was the only change.
Correct, so and there were some small changes in the twenty seventeen version that aren't here. I think most of them are fine, but I just wanted to point them out. So in the twenty seventeen revision, it says the school district, and this is the district. I think for consistency, that's perfect. And then it says, ensure all students with a, the new, the old wording said handicap. Or disability. I just wanted to see, do we want to keep it like this, or? Cause the old policy had those small changes on it. I'm fine with this. I just wanted to see if we wanted to make any kind of adjustment to it at all, or keep the old adjustment. Or leave it as is.
My thought is, if we, we have every right to tweak to Newfield's eyes, our our policies as as we see fit. But if and when we do that, when it comes time to updating them, we're gonna have these discrepancies.
We're gonna have these discrepancies. I'm fine with this. I just wanted to.
What was the wording that you said?
The old wording was the school district versus the district. I'll ensure that all students with, the old wording was a handicap or disability are provided on necessary procedural safeguards. These, the current wording is just no handicap for disability.
I mean.
I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, I think disability is more.
It's more broad. More physical, mental.
More recommended language.
Perfect, okay.
It's more inclusive language.
So that was A C E, and then hopefully it makes sense now why K E D is gonna be withdrawn, because that referenced. Is it even here?
Facilities.
No, it's not in here.
Yes, it it just referenced a specific kind of grievance, and these are all sort of lumped into.
Okay.
I tried.
Nice job.
You did really, really good.
I also asked, just so you know, in my one on one with Heather, if we can get a heads up as to what's coming down the pipe.
Thank you.
Um and she did, and so in December, we're gonna be looking at personnel policy.
How many policies?
And I asked her to ask, can you tell us each time, uh what is the next meeting to be and up to how many policies? She's getting, getting back to me with that.
She's not able to do a general overview and forecast like month by month for the whole year, but she can do one month at a time.
That's fine, I just don't wanna be caught in December trying to, you know, over the holidays.
Also do the, yeah.
A bajillion policies, I mean, I'll do it, but.
We'll do it, but I feel like, yeah, during budget, budget season specifically, that's a little heavy. Okay, so, all right, I will make the motion to approve A C as is, A C A as is, A C A C with changes, A C E as is, J L D B B as is, E B C H as is, E H with amendments.
With, yes.
And then the removal of K E D.
Nice, Ellen.
All in favor?
Uh.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. We'll do that one.
Awesome.
Okay. Um, so it's.
Just have a next meeting?
Oh, right, and then we can go to non-public.
Backside, yeah.
Next meeting is December fourth, um, so we had discussed potentially doing a budget uh
Work, workshop.
workshop with the Budget Advisory Committee um prior to the regular meeting, so at five?
Yes.
Can I check my schedule real quick?
And then you could say that the board meeting will.
Will immediately follow.
Thank you for that, please.
Do we need to have a quorum of the board for the Budget Advisory Committee?
That's a good question, that's a good question.
That's a good question.
Probably not, because it's not a board meeting.
I don't believe so, because it's not a volunteer committee.
Right, it's not a.
I, I think if we all aimed to be here, it'd be great, but I, I can't say for sure.
I can be here for sure, I know I can be here.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe we do.
I'm really glad that they were here tonight too, so it sort of preempted a lot of the questions, that was really helpful.
No, that's great. Uh, I'm gonna double check, see if I can reload my calendar. I think it should be fine.
Well, that's fine, I need to calm my daughter down, she's texting me, I'm like a crazy person.
Um. I might be a sniggle late, but I should be okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, I can be here. So, um, I am going to, um, we're gonna go into non-public um in accordance with, oh, I can never.
It's ninety-one, eight-three, eleven-B.
Eleven-B, yes. Okay, so um, calling us back into public, right? At eight forty-three. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the superintendent designate recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I am going to, was there anything else? No, I am.
Oh, no, uh, we did, the meeting minutes, remember?
Oh.
Um, can, can we, can we postpone this?
Can we just postpone this? Can we just do the next one?
Sure.
Yes.
I, I think that's better.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, but then we can't post them.
We can post drafts.
We can post a draft, yeah, the draft can be posted.
Okay.
Jenny, whatever you want, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, it's fine, I just wanna make sure we have everything up to date on, it drives me crazy when we don't have stuff on the website and I point to people's website and then it's like, ah, it's not there.
But the video is.
The draft's there, and the drafts are always, the drafts are pretty close to.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, um, I also didn't do the principal's report.
Yes, we did, she talked about it.
Oh, shoot.
What's, what's the question?
Couple hours ago.
The principal's response.
It was a while ago.
She did it before policy.
That's right, that's right, I didn't check it off, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we kinda went.
We did, we did way out of.
I gave a brief summary as well.
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
We're good.
Okay, I'm gonna motion to adjourn at eight forty-four P M.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.